Planning Commission to order. And we'll begin tonight with approval of the Planning Commission meeting minutes of January 8th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Trul, second by Hannah, to approve the Plan Commission meeting minutes. Were there any changes or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Council Representative report, Alderperson Trul.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of the items that we had taken up last month actually are coming back to the council tomorrow evening. So, the Kensington Square Dock and, or Deck Expansion and the Sunt Lane rezoning and the like. So, those will still be taken up tomorrow evening. Otherwise, I think the other items were fairly routine.
Yep, thank you. Status of current developments, Planning Director Shula.
The contained in your packet is the monthly kind of summary of where things are at for recent projects. There isn't anything of particular note unless you have questions, I'd answer them.
Comments or questions?
Just a general comment in terms of, I see we've got the discussion about when Duncan and the Pancake are under construction. At the ALRC, at the Public Safety, the Pancake House indicated that they're shooting for an April 1st event for what it's worth.
Absolutely, that's awesome.
Commissioner Hannah?
Sure, just to, I guess, to interest point, the Nordic Ridge, all the two-family lots? Or family lots? It says, "All two-family lots sold," and then the multifamily lot?
Yeah, we understand that they're, the transaction may not have been finalized, but we understand that somebody's, one builder is intending to acquire all those.
Wow, great.
And we should see something.
Yeah, third phase, they plan to bring the third phase, which would extend Hole Avenue all the way to County A. And then the cul-de-sac south of the Stormwater Basin would be installed. And a slight distance to the west would also be constructed on the sub streets there.
Great, so that's our Phase Three then?
That's correct. We just received their, the construction plan aspect of that just this week, so.
Phase Two is the parade next year?
Yes, correct, yep.
Thank you. So, our agenda starts out with a request by Kevin Burrow for approval of an amended specific implementation plan or an SIP for McFarland Bank at 2401 Jackson Street. Rodney?
Technology's gonna fail me. Ultimately, I think you'll find this as being an important or notable change to the site plan. Recall the last time the commissioners were having discussion about the circulation pattern?
Be careful where you wish for it.
They were listening and took note of that, and they brought you back a revised site plan to modify. You'll recall there was kind of a irregular area here with some parking, perpendicular parking in this location. They since modified it to add some parking here and adjusted here, so this is a more fluid route in. Kevin Burrow's here if there's questions for him, but he certainly heard you in the last meeting. So, that's really the brunt of the changes related to that. I think there's also identifying where the bio retention area is located as well.
Thank you, Rodney. Any questions?
I'd move approval.
Is a motion by Trul?
Second.
Second by Engelberger to approve. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Agenda item six is a request by Todd Nelson for approval of a specific implementation plan to construct two four-unit residential multiplex units at 314 West Main Street.
The applicant is here. We did receive some updated materials today. They're on the screen, so I will show them to you. There's a revised site plan and a landscaping plan. We did not have a chance to review the landscaping plan, but certainly at first blush, looks like it probably accomplishes, but we will have to confirm compliance with that. The site plan, it's probably worth pointing out, as the commissioners know, there is a garage that's not part of this facility that has access off of Main Street. That will still remain. It would not be connected to the parking area that's being provided for the four units, but it would be, it's proposed to be hard surface paved, asphalt or concrete to the rear of the property line. There's an existing section of asphalt that would remain here. And then the bio retention area is located in this area. Again, the landscaping plan, we've not had an opportunity to review it, but there was a landscape designer that had been working on it and was reviewing our ordinances for completeness, so I'd expect that it should like, it will likely comply. Todd, is there anything you'd like to highlight as part of the project?
Nope, everything that I've been asked to do, I've made the changes. No elevation access, as I'm visiting Michael did last week about the case and the width in previous area.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Comments or questions from commissioners?
So, in essence, you'd actually be reviewing and approving this landscaping plan subject to our staff review and the site plan, the revised site plan that's before you on the screen tonight, as opposed to the one that was in your packet.
Commissioner Hannah?
Yeah, there seem to be just a few items. I guess, what about being the landscaping plan? And from what Todd mentioned, it sounds like, Michael, you guys have talked about the landscape ratio. It seems pretty close. Then there's, is this a note about the drive access?
The drive access, recall, was related to when we were unclear as to whether this was going to be connected.
Got it.
And it is discontinuous.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and then, there's no photometric required? Michael?
Not if there isn't any.
Exterior lighting.
Exterior lighting.
Nothing, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to approve pending the landscape approval or by the, or review by the staff.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Engelberger, a second by Trul. Further comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. There's a request by Dale Ferseth for extraterritorial jurisdictional land division approval to split the property at 731 Bass Lake Road by a certified survey map in the town of Rutland.
This particular request is before us because within our ETJ, I'm trying to locate the map that shows the position of where it is in the community or outside of the community. Essentially, at the end of Sam Miles, the western end of Sam Miles Road at Bass Lake Road, it's within our ETJ, but it certainly doesn't seem to create any obstacle for us. And it is consistent with our adoption process to allow for this split from the main farmland to occur. I'm sorry, I'll pull back up the screen.
Move approval, second.
There you go.
Is a motion by Trul, second by, I didn't hear, Michael Engelberger. Questions or comments? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Request by Tom Peters for site plan approval to construct a portico addition including exterior building improvements at Van Horn Automotive Group, 1411 U.S. Highway 51.
Actually, I think this is a kind of an exciting project while it's a very, very involved aesthetic as well as some interior modifications, but they provided some elevations of what the exterior of the facility would look. The addition of the portico is really just the very front facade area of the facility on the site plan. You'll note they are creating a hard surface area in the front of the building as well to help allow for better display of their vehicles. Are you with?
Tom Peters is the guy.
That's what I thought. Anything you want to add, or?
No, it's just that, you know, the removal of EPIS and the inclusion of the ACM panels, I think, is part of the corporate image upgrade. It does a really nice job to unify the appearance from the public perspective.
It looks very nice. Comments or questions from our commissioners?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion to approve by Trul, second by Commissioner Hannah. Any further comments or questions? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. There's been a request by A.G. Arnett of Norseview Holdings LLC to discuss a concept plan for property located at the northwest corner of County Highway B and Williams Drive.
I think there's, are you from Ryan Quam's office? Yeah.
Yes, please.
Come on up, give us an overview.
Hi, my name's Aaron Felkuskin, I'm with Quam Engineering on behalf of the developer this evening who is out of state at the moment.
Yeah, just give us an overview of the project as it's conceptualized at this point.
Sure, sure. So, on the screen up there, you see the concept plan with utilities shown. The development is located on roughly 70 acres on the northwest corner of the County Highway B and Williams Drive intersection, which is on the north side of the city. The intention for tonight is to request support and feedback for the development and as well as input on the potential street name for the project. So, the development consists of 17 single-family lots, two mixed-use buildings, two seven-unit townhouses. The current plan, I believe, shows one single building for the townhouses at the northeast corner there that's, could be split into two buildings, two seven-unit buildings. And there's also a bike trail that is proposed on the west side of the development, as well as there's a T-intersection where the trail splits off just north of the parking area for one of the mixed-use buildings right there, right on the cursor there. And then that would head to the east and connect into Williams Drive. So, there's also sidewalk on both sides of the street. The development also consists of a stormwater management area at the southeast corner of the site. It's a wet detention pond that would provide stormwater management, and we're currently getting soil testing on the property to evaluate the potential for infiltration practices to be incorporated into the plans. The single-family lots are roughly 45 feet wide by 105 feet deep, so right around a tenth of an acre in size. The average home price is anticipated to be around $200,000 to $220,000, which the developer has gotten some good feedback or has heard there's a good demand for that price point from several interested parties. The mixed-use buildings, those are anticipated to be three stories in height. They'll have underground parking and surface parking. The surface parking will be located behind the buildings as viewed from the highway as well as Williams Drive. The buildings themselves kind of provides some natural screening from that intersection from any surface parking. The...
Is there anticipated commercial first floor?
Yes, exactly, sorry. Yeah, so first floor would have office, commercial space, and then the second and third floors, it's, would be apartments. The footprints that are shown on the plan right now are roughly around 12,000 square feet for a footprint, to give you some idea. There is also an open space just north of the surface parking on the, one of the mixed-use buildings right there, yeah, right there, just south of Lot 9, I believe it is. The developers anticipating putting in some playground equipment for the neighborhood and potentially if there's, say, a daycare in one of the mixed-use spaces, they'd be able to use that for playground purposes.
Is this where drainage goes under the tracks?
Yes, there's some off-site drainage to a culvert that's underneath the railroad tracks.
That would go through this park area?
We would anticipate having a storm sewer extended to the end of the existing culvert or just on the other side of the bike path. So, right now, I think that might be, that plan might be a little outdated from what we have recently worked on, which is pretty happening live at the moment. So, we would, right now, I think we're showing an extension to that culvert on that drawing, but that instead of having that culverts connect, we'd probably have those disconnected and still have a culvert likely underneath the bike path or having a catch basin at the end of that existing culvert and having storm sewer pipes to meet in with that next catch basin that's closer to the sidewalk to the east there. So, there wouldn't be any exposed pipe on that lawn area, it would be all underground. So, they would have, the playground would be about that area.
Very nice. Comments? Commissioner Trul?
You indicated that the lots that we're seeing there are a tenth of an acre, roughly, sized houses, are we looking to put on a tenth of an acre?
The sized houses would be, so I think that's, the lot size is around 4,500 square feet, so maybe, maybe half of that or so of the footprint, maybe 2,000 square feet, something like that, assuming they need all the setbacks.
Commissioner Engelberger?
Thank you, Your Honor. Rodney, is this in the city right now, or is this gonna need to be annexed?
It's in the city limits. It's not in the city's urban service area at this point.
Okay, so how does that affect the sewer system?
This is the same developer that's working on the North Page Street area, who's been presenting night concepts to expand the urban service area. This would be part of that same application to do so.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Hannah?
Thanks. Yes, two questions. One, I recall, wasn't the lift station gonna be placed on this site?
It is gonna be, yes, to answer, yeah, so we are proposing the lift station. It's located just southwest of the detention pond, in that location right there.
Okay.
We're also looking at an alternative location that would be just to the west of where it is now, so it would be kind of between the two mixed-use buildings, kind of right in that area right there. So, we're looking at that alternative location as well.
Okay, sure.
If I could continue. As far as, you know, access for service and things like that for the city, do you see any issues with, you know, maybe having an input on where that goes and, I mean, being behind a large building? And, I mean, trying to understand the grade, it seems like there's a fair amount of slope going down to that detention pond, maybe 12 feet or so?
Sure, so are you referring to the lift station?
Yeah, yeah, so I guess my question would just be maybe to the city end for you, Aaron, is just, you know, a collaboration on where that lift station goes so that, you know, ease of access and maintenance and, you know, whatever might be required would make sense. I'm just trying to understand the grade, and I know, I don't know if you have any, you know, adjusted grades for those buildings, it doesn't look like it, but there's, and then where you jump in is, if you could describe the grade transition on the site and how that works along B?
Sure, so the lift station, the anticipated location for maintenance access would come off of Highway B, especially if it's located between the two mixed-use buildings there, we would show access or the grade basically pretty close to what the highway grade is right now. And there would either be a slope going back down to the underground driveway entrances to the underground garages there.
Yeah.
Or retaining wall. We would try to use just like a three-to-one side slope, something like that, typical slope along the road to make that grade transition.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Trul?
Do you have an estimate of the number of apartments that you're looking to put in that conceptual apartment building?
The number of apartments, I do not have that information at the moment.
Okay, then a question of staff. What is, what would be our side yard setback and our front yard setback on these lots?
Depends on the zoning, that would be applied to them. I mean, if it's, if it's an SR6, it would be 25 front, 10 sides, combination of 14 or 10, seven. So, it really depends on the zoning class. My belief is they'll be seeking some type of planned mixed-use type on this whole area. You know, this isn't an endorsement of the project, you're trying to provide in feedback. There's a number of questions that you're raising that need to be talked through.
Yeah, I'm gonna budge to get there, because that's why I was asking what conventional side yard would be, most likely in typical residential would be 10. So, back to the 45-foot wide lots with 10 feet on either side, leaving us a footprint of 25 without some kind of exceptions. And then we're looking at 100-foot that, the front would be 25 feet on that, correct?
Yeah, 30 in the back.
To me, this is incredibly dense, and I can't imagine how small these, some of these houses might end up having to be here. So, that would certainly be my comment in terms of conceptually. I think we're perhaps looking to, I understand the developers wish to try and hit a price point, but should these all be developed? I think this is gonna be way too, way too many houses in a relatively small place, especially if we, I was trying to best guess on square footage for the apartments. And you indicated that the mixed-use building is potentially three or four stories?
Three stories.
Three stories, okay. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartlett?
Yeah, definitely like, you brought the development there, definitely support development of that, but I think along those lines, I would have a question about the density, especially along with Commissioner Hannah's comment about services, city services, emergency services with that one single lane to that many people in the, in an area. And also, have you, part of your planning, do you, have you or do you look at the planning, traffic studies in that area? That intersection right there in the southeast is very heavily traveled and kind of packed. Rodney, you know, would that be a county issue to need to put a light? I'm sure if this went there, we'd probably have to upgrade that intersection pretty quickly, it's already a dangerous intersection.
Well, it's County Highway. It's a local connection to Williams Drive. The county would be concerned about connections nearby, so they'd have input on to that as well.
Would they have to give approval for that close a connection, you know, offhand?
I'm not sure about the exact distance where they'd have to. I know that they would have to provide or have to consider access to a lift station, a service drive from that location off of B is, seems unlikely, but it may be possible.
Thank you.
Maybe I can just highlight a couple other things. We haven't had an internal discussion about this with the developer, this was submitted for you guys to provide input. One of the things that I think is important to reflect on is the amount of parkland. I know that there's a parkland park right across the street, but there is a dedication requirement for per unit that should be looked at, and I don't know how much land is being proposed to be dedicated, but you should monitor that. I would also suggest that the length of the cul-de-sac, city's comprehensive plan doesn't anticipate annexing any lands farther north than the termination of this roadway, so it would probably be appropriate to have a bulbed cul-de-sac at an appropriate distance from the end here. And recognizing stormwater management, moving through the site and moving through the area that was gonna be put, you suggested there might be playground equipment here, that's gonna have to really be looked at for suitability with the stormwater moving through this particular area. So, a couple things, like I've identified, but you also will need to look at what the dedication requirement is for the County Highway B corridor. I mean, that's a corridor, and I think our comprehensive plan maps that out to have a dedicated 120-foot wide right-of-way, so there might be a need to dedicate additional right-of-way here as this would be developed. Comprehensive plan talks about that. The internal access here, if this is a dead end, there's a maximum length required or that's allowable by city ordinances. I believe it's 600 feet, just going off the top of my head, so really gonna have to look at how that would, internal circulation would work. In addition, having commercial, a fair amount of commercial activity potentially coming in and out of here, we will have to look at how this functions well out here.
Thank you. Commissioner Hannah, I know you had some questions.
Yeah, Commissioner Bartlett and Rodney pointed out a lot of the things I was gonna speak about, and you know, it's kind of services, fire, access like that, you know, with the dead end kind of being a concern. The length of that drive to the townhouses seemed, you know, just, I guess, the feasibility of getting a fire truck down there all the way towards the end or, and then the distance of the, from the intersection to the main entry to the whole development. I've, you know, been through that intersection before where it can be backed up a few cars deep and someone's trying to turn right out of there or even turn left out of there, it could, could really kind of boggle things up a little bit. And then what Scott said about lot size, it just seems, seems to be pretty tight. You know, looking at this, this area with the townhouses, I mean, there's a lot of different housing types, which is great, you know, and I know you want to maximize what you get for the density, but you may be investigating what type of housing would go out there if, maybe there's, you know, duplex or twin housing out there, just a way to, the dead end just seems really abrupt to me with no future plans as to where that's ever gonna go. You know, I guess one more point about the whole layout of it is, you know, if I was looking to buy a lot out here, I don't think I would really see, I wouldn't want a lot on between 10 and 17 with my backyard looking at townhouse garages, you know, and maybe there's some landscape feature that goes, that goes back there. Lot 9 seems, I don't know, right on the bend and right next to the playground and stormwater area. So, maybe just a better transition between the different types of housing. It might feel a little bit more natural, but it seems like there's quite a bit going on, on just knowing the site itself. It'd be a pretty dense development in an area that is kind of on an island at this point.
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Bartlett?
Sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry, did you have one comment?
Just mentioned landscaping and kind of separating elements as best we can. One of the things that the developer wanted me to stress is that he's excited about the project, excited to work with the city, wants to make this look attractive, like where someone, an attractive addition for the city where someone would want to live. So, he wanted me to emphasize that he intends to put or to make the landscaping stand out and look exceptional, not just meet the code essentially, but he realizes it's near an intersection, Highway Williams Drive, seems like that's a busy intersection, so he wants, he wants the development to look nice. I'm glad you brought that up.
Very nice, thank you. Commissioner Bartlett?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a question on angled parking on Williams Drive. It seems like a, I mean, a heavy concentration of angled parking coming off back into Williams Drive, especially the way we're talking about the traffic that's gonna be along there. Is that primarily, I'm guessing, to meet requirements for the amount of guest parking for those townhouses, or?
It's actually, so the park to the east, the baseball fields, I think it's Oak Knoll Park to the east there.
Okay.
The developers heard and I think through experience is that there's a lot of overflow parking that seems to occur during baseball events, so this was kind of his... So, this was kind of his intention of alleviating, alleviating some of that overflow onto Williams Drive to provide an actual parking area for some of those vehicles.
Okay, so it's parking primarily for the use across the street?
Exactly.
Okay, so it's not necessary for the housing development at all, just?
That would be secondary for any guests.
And I'd have to go back over to that park. There's not enough parking, from what he's seen, there's not enough parking at the, the playground and the ball fields itself.
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So then people are going to have to be cutting across Williams to get from where they're parking over. So, I'll have to think about that a little bit, but, you know.
It's a township park, but this, the, the youth softball leagues have used that park for quite some time now. Commissioner Truul.
And again, back to something Rodney had mentioned, I was going to ask that question. And just looking at the, the drive, the length of that roadway there, it did appear to be more than, I was, didn't remember if it was 500 or 600 feet in terms of getting in there, and if you do do a cul-de-sac, I don't think you'll get all the way back to, you know, lots, lots two and 11, and kind of back there someplace. So, almost naturally, I think you're going to end up having some, some different lots on that back end. And again, my, my concern is, is, was back to what other exceptions you might be looking for, because again, kind of making that same assumption about side yard setbacks on these things, we're really only talking about to meet our, what I think our code would be. We're only talking about a footprint of 25 feet wide. So, that's why I was asking you before about how big the buildings are, because it seemed to, to get the 2,000 square feet, you effectively would have to take the entire, more than I think our, our normal setbacks would be, sharing slots.
Thank you. Good conversation. Further comments or suggestions? Not at this time. Thank you so much for bringing it forward.
Thank you.
And, you know, always connect with staff if you have some questions.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item 10 is a request by the city of Stoughton for a certified survey map CSM approval to combine the parcels at 2439 County Highway A for the new public works facility and 1101 Collins Road for a compass, composting, composting operation. Rodney?
This graphic will be used for both this one and the rezoning request. Lot one is the parcel that will have the primary public works facility on it. Lot two has the wetlands as well as an area that would be utilized for composting. So, I'll just speak to the next item a little bit. So, the top one, lot one, would be rezoned to the institutional, or is being proposed to be rezoned to the institutional. Lot two would be proposed to be rezoned to the heavy industrial.
Thank you, Rodney. Comments or questions? Commissioner Engelberger.
Thank you, Your Honor. Do we own everything here now?
Everything on lots one and two.
Is cleared?
Yep. Correct.
Will she approve it?
Second.
A motion by Engelberger, second by Truul. Further comments or questions? All those in favor? I. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Bartlet.
Is, is the heavy industrial designation required for the composting?
It is.
Okay, but that's not going to impact the wetlands at all in terms of?
No, still have wetland separation requirements around those, but it's necessary for the composting activities.
Excellent.
Thank you. So, a motion by Commissioner Engelberger, second by Commissioner Truul. All those in favor? I.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. There's a request by the city of Stoughton to rezone the parcels at 2439 County Highway A from Rural Holding, Rural Holding one, to Institutional to accommodate a public works facility and 1101 Collins Road from Rural Holding to Heavy Industrial to accommodate a composting operation. And I think Rodney went through a lot of that for us, so we'll go ahead and I will close the meeting and open a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak at the public hearing? Not seeing anyone. I'll close the public hearing and reopen for the regular course of business.
Move approval.
There's a motion by Truul, second by Engelberger. Further comments or questions? All those in favor? I.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. Excuse me. There's a request by the city of Stoughton for a conditional use permit to allow more than 120% of the required parking stalls for a public works facility at 2439 County Highway A. Rodney?
This really goes to the fact that the parking lot, the employee and public parking area, 120% would allow for 30 parking stalls. It's proposed to be 33. They do some training and interaction with some of the other agencies. So, we certainly think that it's affordable to have a slightly larger parking lot to accommodate those uses.
Thank you. So, I'll go ahead and I'll close the meeting and open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would wish to speak at the public hearing? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and reopen for the regular course of business.
Move approval.
Exactly.
There's a motion by Truul, second by Hanna. Comments or questions? All those in favor? I.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. We're going to then move right on to item 14. I know that Attorney Dregney is coming to participate with us in item 13. So, 14 is a proposed Department of Planning and Development Fee Schedule Amendment. I think this is something we talked about last time we met. Rodney?
I'd move approval.
Okay, we don't even want to talk about it. There's a motion by Truul, is there? Second, second by Engelberger. Comments or questions?
From a common standpoint, again, I appreciate staff making this, these modifications. I think, again, like I said, I'm very used to seeing it in other communities. There ought to be some penalty for people not getting, not pulling permits in a timely fashion, so it's a good, good move.
Conversation, because we do need to drag this out just a little bit until Matt shows up.
We requested he come at 6:45, and-
That's all right. We can take a little break as well. But first, we will vote on agenda item 14. All those in favor? I.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carries. We can talk a little bit about future agenda items.
Future agenda items, one of them, at a staff level, we've, we've continued to find things that we want to work on within the zoning code. So, as time permits and energy is available, we'll, we'll present those, things that we uncover as we're working with specific applications. So, there's a number of things that we'll, we'll bring forward related to that in the coming months.
Thanks, Rodney.
Sure.
Yeah, so regarding the agenda item nine, that is, you, you guys haven't even had a chance to really look at that. Brief overview, I guess, is all you got?
There, there's a real process that we'll go through, and one of the initial steps is to try to get initial feedback from the group. You're right, we've not sat down and said, "You need to do this," or "Code requires you to do that." There hasn't been that interaction with them at this point. They really just wanted to have something before the commission to get some really cursory comments and, and thoughts on the table.
Right, thank you. Should we take just a quick break, and I'll bring you back together as soon as Matt shows up? So, we'll, motion to recess. Thank you. I'll call the meeting back to order, and we'll address agenda item 13, which is our discussion on the proposed ordinance amendments as recommended by the Landmarks Commission related to the request by the Common Council to develop an ordinance for consideration by the council that would amend existing city ordinances such that no building in a historic district listed on the National Register of Historic Places may be demolished without review and a recommendation by Landmarks Commission and a decision by the Common Council based on an appropriate and lawful standard.
I'll probably, I'll probably start. Matt's going to be helping, and we're going to walk through this. But recall, the commissioners wanted us to have some input, and so we'll, we'll go with that. Commissioner Hanna had an option.
Yeah, if I could just, just to kind of, for a little background knowledge. If I recall, during our last month's meeting, how many historic districts do we currently have?
Um, I think we have six. Is it six, Mike?
Five.
Five, sorry.
I think it's five.
Five, five. All residential currently?
The downtown one is not.
Or residential.
Right.
Got it, yeah. Okay.
And actually, that probably, that's a perfect segue, because one of the things that we took away from the discussion, or looking back at the motion, we haven't heard of any, the Landmarks Commission, or any discussion about demolition restrictions on the other districts. All the discussion we've been really focusing on has been related to the downtown historic commercial district. So, with that said, at a staff level, we're not recommending any demolition restrictions on anything in any of the other districts at all. We are currently sitting on, if you will, a couple of requests from people in outer districts that want to demolish detached garages, for example, but under the, under the moratorium are unable to do so. That's not to say landmark buildings and landmark properties, locally designated landmark properties, are still subject to those requirements. So, if you're in a historic district alone, this does not, is not proposed to have any demolition restrictions, with the exception of what we're talking through in the downtown historic commercial district. So, I think those are two initial distinctions we wanted to, and we see tonight as an interactive process with the commissioners, because we really see the need to get some feedback and understanding as to what the goals and objectives of the changes are. So, with that said, we, we're not proposing any, any additional restrictions in the historic districts outside of the downtown district. Item three, we did talk about repealing and recreating, repeal section 913, which was more of a procedural aspect of the ordinance, but then it recreates chapter 78, 517. And you'll recall, the Landmarks Commission worked a great deal with, with Matt to really craft that draft. And the commissioners here believe that it's important that we look at that from our, our lens. One of the things that I think is very important that we highlight, at least at the staff level, there's a lot of great information in this design guideline document. From our perspective, it was really written as a guide, and codifying it, which is really kind of the, the outcome of previous iterations of the draft, may not be what the commission and city really want to have happen. You'll recognize, we can accomplish that by saying any permissive language becomes a requirement, so we can accomplish it. But I don't know if that's the outcome that everybody feels is important to sustain in this, in the downtown historic district. So, that's going to require some, some feedback from the commissioners and the community about whether that's really the outcome that, that we're seeking.
Yeah, and just on the, the last sentence of number five is that it's not used, currently not used as a requirement for local landmark properties either, correct?
Yeah, Michael attends those meetings, but they're really looking at landmark property, you know, local landmark properties. And they use some state standards for many of the criteria to be met for those properties. Not to say that this isn't available for them and, and may be used in conversation, but it's not codified by them for use on any of their, their regulatory properties.
So, the only place it would apply would be 517?
Yeah, and 517 is, would be for the downtown historic district. Again, it's still a valuable tool for people that have older properties or homes within the community, because there's a lot of information about the architectural styles of different facilities and recommendations that they could still utilize, but it wouldn't be codified for any other location.
Can I just offer a brief comment? So, there's a need for a standard, and, so that's one option, but certainly you may consider other options. But we need something.
Right. 517 has some standards in it already, and so, at least at a staff level, our, our comfort level seems to be leaning towards modifying or reviewing the 517 standards as opposed to adopting this as a codified standard, so. Let's talk about the buildings that are included in this document. Well, if I, if I'm successful here, we will. The existing 517 section does not require standards for non-contributing buildings within the, the districts. So, out of the 66 buildings that are downtown, 18 of them wouldn't, are not listed as contributing properties. If we codified this, for example, in its entirety, without recognizing that, we'd have those buildings having to be brought into that compliance for any activities they did on those facilities. That's not to say you still wouldn't have to meet standards if you modify those buildings, even if you didn't codify this. It's just that you may find it difficult, or you may want to look at whether we even exclude certain buildings from that standard. That's another option. We've got a number of pictures in here that are included, just for discussion.
If I could add to that, Rodney?
Yeah.
Question, so, I know this is on the council agenda, but the McFarland State, McFarland State Bank building that they're looking to do something with is, I didn't review it in here, but I'm guessing it's a non-contributing?
It's not in that district.
It's not?
It's just outside the district. It goes to the alley, essentially. So, it would not fall under these standards.
Okay, so it's just the parking lot?
Correct. Anything they construct new would have to apply to any ordinances we have on the books at the time.
Thank you.
Yep. So, you're going to recognize, obviously, all these buildings, but all of them have different levels of, of architectural style, and Keygonza Plaza, the middle, the photo in the middle here, really shows a couple of things. If you look at this, there's even standards on signage. This happens to be a temporary 30-day type thing that wouldn't be allowed. I'm not saying it should or shouldn't, I'm just giving you the character of the issues. This particular building, you may find some of the similar architectural features, but certainly material types and others are going to be far different than what would normally have been approved under the design guidelines here. Again, this lower picture shows another sales sign. How do you deal with a building like this particular one? You know, the very fact that that's, the likelihood of that being upgraded or updated to meet some of these standards, or do you recognize that it's not contributing and try to address it differently? Even, even the building-
I got a question, Rodney.
Yeah, go ahead.
How did a building like that even get approved in downtown Stoughton? That just boggles my mind.
I wasn't here then.
How long ago that was, but I mean, it's, you know.
Oh, it's just before that.
You got a historic district that was even more historic at that time, and this is what they put there? It's unbelievable.
Well, even, even this building is a non-contributing building.
Yeah.
So.
Doesn't look quite as bad as the other one.
Even, even this one is a non-contributing building. Now, there's some older characteristics of it, but it's not, it's not a, it's a non-contributing building within the district.
Can I just ask how you, when you say non-contributing, what are you, where is that term coming from?
From the, when the, the district was put together, there was building, and it's, I think they're even listed in here.
They are, they're in here.
They're, they're in here.
Each building is stated, if it's non or not our contributing.
Contributing to the overall character or the designation of the district.
If I could just mention, so right now, under chapter, under 78, 517, I guess it is?
Yep.
What it says is that the planning- What it says is that the planning department or planning director is, it doesn't mention non-contributing building?
Right.
In that sense, what it says is, any building that the planning director deems to be not conforming to the standards in the ordinance, it doesn't apply to. The ordinance doesn't apply. So the way the ordinance is currently drafted, Rodney would have, if somebody wants to do something to any building in the district, Rodney would have to say, does this even apply? And he would have the discretion under the ordinance, as it's drafted today, to say, do I believe this building meets the standards or not? And if he says, no, it doesn't meet the standards, then this, none of this would apply. So the draft of the ordinance that came out of landmarks took, changed that. And now it, the draft that came out of landmarks, it applies to every building in the downtown design overlay district, including these examples that Rodney is showing you, that were not deemed to be contributing to the district at the time, I guess, the district was created.
Yep.
And so I think there are several questions that the planning commission needs to consider. One is, do you believe that these standards should apply to every building in the district? Or are there some buildings that it shouldn't apply to, and how should those buildings be identified? Should they be?
Which section are you referring to, Matt?
Well, it's not, in the current draft of?
No, in the one that's proposed.
In the one that's proposed, there is nothing in there that talks about applicability that distinguishes between buildings, it just applies to every building in the district. So in the ordinance.
So something was removed out of the prior one then?
Yes.
Which section was that?
Do anyone have 78, 517 in front of them?
It's in the packet.
Yeah, the existing one?
Yep.
It's a red line.
It's kind of near the front.
It's red line, so.
It's called applicability. It's one of the first sections of 78, 517.
I have it on the screen.
I don't see any red lines on that.
Well, it wouldn't be in this red line, Rodney. It would be in the, it would be in the existing 78, 517.
So this isn't an existing red line version?
This doesn't show you?
That doesn't do us a lot of good.
Am I in front of, you want me to read that? 78, 517, I think you're referring to?
If he wants to, I'll just make sure we're.
Matt, do you have a copy of that? If not?
I think it's right, I think we have it.
It'd be great if we could get it on the screen.
Yeah.
Rodney's going to get it on the screen.
There it is, it's right here.
Right here, guys. It's down under sub three. Application of regulations. And it's also, notice there's two different sentences. The first sentence says, buildings which are considered to be in compliance, as determined by the planning and development department, are required to follow the standards. Second sentence is similar but different. Buildings which are considered to be, are not considered to be compliant, as determined by the director of planning and development, are not required to follow the standards. So that's gone from the draft that came out of landmarks. And the question is, do you need to think about whether there's some buildings in this district that these guidelines should not apply to? And then there's the interesting, let's say you decide, well, they shouldn't apply to an existing building. So if somebody has an existing building that doesn't really fit in, and they want to make a change to it, should these standards govern what they can do there? And if the answer to that is no, okay. The next question is, what if they remove that building? Two questions, really. Should they be allowed to maintain that as a vacant site for an indefinite period of time? And second, if and when they do rebuild, should that new structure be required to comply with some kind of standards in this downtown area? Or should they be able to say, hey, I had a building that didn't meet your requirements before, and when I put up a new building, I shouldn't have to meet these design guidelines with respect to the new building? As I see it, those are the series of questions that are kind of out there for consideration. The way the ordinance came out of landmarks commission, if you own any building in that district, including, what is that, Viking Mall?
Yeah, we're going to go back to that one.
Then everything applies. If you want to change out a window, somehow your window has to conform to that booklet. I don't know how that happens. If you want to take it down, well, you've got to meet, you've got to comply with all these standards with respect to demolition. If you want to put a new building there, you've got to meet the standards.
It really, it really creates a challenge for maintenance of an existing facility. That's a prime example, and one we wanted to point out, is that the windows or the doors or the, even signage on a particular building, how do we, and if I'm asked to look at it, I'm going to say, well, first of all, that building's not contributing. This, I'd use this as a guide and say, okay, this isn't a contributing building to the district. Is it reasonable for us to, for me, if that's what I'm supposed to identify as part of 517, and say, hold them to that standard? I think it'd be difficult to say, you need to have those replacement windows match the standards within here, even though you aren't a contributing building to the district.
Well, and I think the answer is, since those standards were not designed to do that.
Right.
So it doesn't really work in that context. Those standards weren't designed to say, if you've got a non-contributing building and you're going to change the windows, here's what you do. So that, that obviously has to be addressed.
Commissioner Hannah?
Thanks. I've got another question, but just to point on that, so basically what you're saying is, just applying all that really isn't an end-all, because it doesn't, it doesn't, it leaves us still with some predicaments as far as, there is no, not quite a guideline as to how to update a non-conforming building without re-facading everything. And then the other question I had is, where do non-contributing portions fall into this discussion? Because, you know, from what I've read and seen, that there are historic buildings, but with non-contributing components on it. And so let's say, I know there's some pictures of some staircases and access points that aren't facing the street, so does that, let's say that becomes unsafe, and they're almost forced, from a safety standpoint, and say there's living quarters above, how do you make that compliant to create access to the second story if, say, they need to resurface or structurally it becomes unsafe? I think it's a real challenge, you know, and I guess I kind of look at it from a, two different perspectives. A historical perspective, you know, we need to respect our downtown and the character that it has, but you also need to take an economic perspective, too, is that, you know, we don't want to put a stranglehold on our existing business owners, potential business owners, to make it so challenging to do anything, to update, to maintain, that economically does the feasibility of some of it, you know, a building could just sit there. Who's going to want to buy it if they have to double the cost of the value of the building just to, you know, acquire it and open a business?
Well, in my mind, at least with respect to, if you've got a, if you've got a building that this body agrees should be protected by guidelines that you establish, let's assume it's these guidelines or something similar to them, and there's some part of that building that doesn't really meet that today.
Mm-hmm.
And if these standards are adopted, then I don't think that requires the building owner to immediately go out and change.
Right.
Their building and to come into compliance. But if they came in and they said, I want to change out a window, and let's say it's the window is not really complying today, that new window they'd have to put in would have to meet the new standard, okay? To me, that's not an unreasonable place to go, to, you know, to kind of try and get to that result. Now, if you've got a building, on the other hand, that is entirely out of character with the downtown today, I don't see a practical way to say to that building owner, well, any time you want to change something, now you have to somehow bring your building into compliance with these standards. To me, that doesn't make sense. So what makes sense to me is for you to identify those buildings in this district that should be exempt from the standards, at least with respect to things that they do to that building, okay? If they want to replace the windows or whatever, should put on a new roof, in my mind, you should identify those buildings and say, those kind, those buildings are just not going to be subjected to these requirements. Then you still have to ask yourself the next question, which is, what if one of those buildings were to be replaced?
Right.
What rules apply to that replacement building? And then finally, last piece, you know, back to standards. What should the standards be? If the guidelines that are in that booklet, if you all decide, for whatever reason, you want to do something different, that's fine, but you've got to do something. So somehow, some kind of standards will have to be available to you and to applicants to guide their decisions about their projects.
And are there areas of a building that would not be governed by those guidelines?
Portions or structures.
Portions of particular structures. So even though you've got a front facade, do we want to have a guideline for the rear of the buildings, the same as we would the front?
Right, you might say the guidelines apply only to the front facades and not to the back.
Commissioner Truell, Truell had a comment.
Yeah, I guess my question is back to the way we handle non-conforming uses right now, proportionality. I mean, that's really a case of, if someone, if someone has a non-conforming building at this point, in terms of, don't we have an amount of repair or things that they can potentially do before they have to?
Yes, but.
Like up to 50% or something?
It's become more difficult.
As a practical matter, I would try and steer clear of that kind of approach. I have never seen that approach work with the existing framework that we have for lawful, you know, non-conforming structures. Rodney, have you ever seen a building where they had to bring it into compliance? I never have in my career. And it's a very difficult administrative problem to administer that kind of a provision. I mean, you could theoretically say, you've got a building that doesn't conform, and once you have spent, you know, 50% of the assessed value of the building on maintaining that thing, now boom, the next thing you do, you've got to completely conform to our code, but I've just never seen that work.
I guess my challenge is, you know, when you were just saying a minute ago, that you want to, if someone has, wants, needs to replace a window, that that's a place to start, for example. To me, that's just patently crazy. I mean, you know, there's got to be a way where we accomplish the goals of trying to have a, you know, an attractive and consistent and historic and, you know, design in downtown, but we've got to find a way to be able to provide some flexibility for maintenance and upkeep.
What I'm saying, if it's a non-conforming building? You don't have to worry about it. You don't, you don't.
It didn't seem to be where you were coming from before, because you're saying what was coming out of landmarks, or at least, you know.
I don't endorse what came out of landmarks. It's not my work product.
Okay. Either you're trying to merge those two, and I was having a tough time with that, because effectively saying that this ought to apply to all the buildings downtown doesn't, I don't agree with. And so that's where, going back to the 18 buildings that you identified, or some share of other things, you know, looking for guidance.
Commissioner Hannah?
Yeah, I mean, I think it makes it challenging. We have our downtown, it is what it is now. And I don't think it's, I see this more of as moving forward, we're going to try to maintain these guidelines, and any new buildings or new development are going to follow a certain type of guidelines, so that we're not repeating history of what's happened, of how we've gotten to now, with piecemeal projects and different-looking buildings. But I think the task of, you know, almost forcing existing building owners to update and improve through this ordinance.
Again, I'm not recommending.
No, no, I know, and I'm just making an open comment. I'm not speaking at you, Matt, I understand that. But, you know, just to think of the approach that we want to take, and I feel like that's almost like the message we're saying, is like, well, now it's on you to improve the past mistakes that whoever approved, we're sorry, I know you already occupied the building, but tough. You know, it's really nobody else, nobody's fault here for why we got to now, but it's just moving forward that we have some form of guideline. So I guess I would, I don't, I don't think we need to throw a whole blanket over everything. I think that opens up a whole lot of, a whole lot of issues, and it could really upset some of our great existing business owners who have been downtown for a long time.
So I don't know how you guys want to operate. We can do this informally, where we just have discussion about ideas and direction, and then I can ask, kind of as a, I can try and summarize and say, is that where you want to go? Is that the direction you want us to go? And then if you all say yes, then we can make those changes and bring it back to you. But, so, do you want to go in a direction where we build into this kind of an applicability provision that makes it clear that buildings that today don't, you know, say are non-contributing, were identified as non-contributing to the, to the district, are exempt from the requirements of this ordinance with respect to, you know, anything that happens to that building? Setting aside, for the moment, demolition or replacing it, but just like maintaining it, modifying it, new roof, new windows, doors, colors, anything like that, just say, these rules don't apply to that. Is that a direction you'd like to go?
I had Commissioner Engelberger and then Bartlett that wanted to make a comment.
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, if we're going to move this thing forward, we need to make some changes and recommend whatever we're going to recommend. I guess I got a question, and then I got a comment after, I hope I can get an answer from everybody on this. Is, does everybody on this commission agree, or not agree, either yes or no, if any contributing building within the downtown district should be covered under these rules, under the, under the current rules? Under what we're trying to adjust here?
I think you're asking kind of a two-part question. I think you're asking about, what I'm hearing you ask is, do the contributing buildings apply to the current rules? And I've heard Rodney and Matt say, well, we really don't have rules. We've got these guidelines.
Well, that's what I'm seeing, with the guidelines that we have.
So do?
Does everybody agree with that or not?
Do we all believe that contributing buildings should have to adhere to the guidelines? Is that your question?
That's my question.
Okay.
I want to hear an answer from each commissioner.
Sure. Commissioner Bartlett has his question up.
Barman.
Barman, I'm sorry.
No problem. It kind of gets back to why I raised my hand initially, and I think it's important to understand that there's kind of a difference in what makes a building non-contributing. And you could have the bones of a historic structure, you could have the majority of the building be intact, but have the, a previous owner put, for example, a slip cover over the top of it, and it would be non-contributing. Versus, we've lost the historic building, someone built something in the 70s, which is not up to the standards that we want, and that's non-contributing.
Things don't become non-contributing unless somebody skirts the rules.
Okay. So I'll give you.
What I'm saying is, if things are considered contributing, does everybody agree that
Well, see here.
These rules should be followed?
Here's the challenge for me, and I'll even just take my build, my wife and my building, the old Citgo gas station, that would have been considered non-contributing because of the changes that previous owners have made, but we've been able to peel those back. And if we would apply for historic designation now, we would probably be eligible, because we've taken off those non-contributing portions. And so for me, it's difficult to answer, because I break non-contributing into two pieces. And I would say yes for some of those and no for some of the others, in terms of how I would fall, in terms of whether I think they should follow guidelines.
Things are black and white. They're either. They're either contributing or they're not. And if they're not contributing when they were contributing, it's because somebody didn't follow the rules, somebody broke the rules. So that's a simple question.
But I would also offer, maybe the rules weren't there.
They are there. They've been there for a long time. How long has this book been in place?
Ninety-three.
Again, those are guidelines, ninety-three.
They were never codified. They're not codified, they're guidelines.
They're guidelines.
This ordinance was adopted in, when was this adopted?
Oh nine.
Two thousand nine. So before then, there might not have been any...
So since two thousand nine, that's my question. I'd like an answer from the commissioners.
Sure.
And then I'd like the floor still.
All right. Right now, Commissioner Hanna?
Yeah, I'll answer that. I think there should be guidelines. I think I need more time to look through these specific guidelines, and whether it's this document, you know, I'm just flipping open to this page of proportion. You know, I see some really nice-looking buildings, but they're not, according to this document, you know, some of these aren't in proportion with the other buildings. Now, do I want to throw that onto a nice historic building that we already have, and because it's not proportionate to the two next to it, that needs to be knocked down a whole floor? So maybe these guidelines aren't, I mean, they can't be the end-all, so I think there needs to be some guidelines, but does it have to be this document from 1993? No. But we do need guidelines moving forward so that we don't allow anybody to skirt the rules, or, you know, sneak a project in, or whatever it is. You know, now they'll have to pay double the fee, so at least we'll have that, right? But I think, you know, there's a lot going on in here. I mean, it's a thick document with a lot of different components in here, and again, if you apply these to our existing buildings, I think that's the biggest part that I want to look at, is how are our existing buildings affected by these guidelines, and if they should want to do maintenance, or upgrades, or alterations, is that going to dramatically affect a building?
And I would add to that, does it affect that owner's ability to make those upgrades?
Yeah.
Because the last thing I would want to do is have this or anybody put in some kind of rules or standards that would prevent people from making upgrades that they otherwise might.
So I guess the answer would be, yes, we need guidelines. What those guidelines are, I think, need to be figured out. And just slapping these guidelines on there without doing a thorough review, I don't think would be fair.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanna. Commissioner Trul.
From my standpoint, I think as long as folks understand, and if they've been made aware, that they're in a design area, and especially if it's something that's been there for, you know, an extended period of time, to your question about whether contributory buildings should be, should need to follow either this or some type of guidelines, I support that. I think it's a good idea. I think where we've had the, where part of my challenge has been, is, I don't want to make sure we're not illegally taking value or taking property away from folks, you know, by not allowing them to take care of other buildings going forward. But I, you know, if they've been a part of their zoning, my biggest issue with this, frankly, is the fact that it's making sure that people understand when they purchase property, that they're in the right districts, that they have certain requirements and things like that. So as long as they know what they're getting into, I think that's a, it would be, it's in our best interest to have some general guidelines. I do have a concern with the non-contributing buildings, because I just don't know how to get around those right now. You know, again, I think it comes into a point where I'd like to see some guidelines for any substantial improvements. Again, picking on that one building that we were looking at, you know, changing a window or two isn't going to change the look of that building. You know, we have to figure out if it's rebuilt, what kind of standards we'd like to see.
Commissioner Bartlett. Bartlett.
Yep. Well, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Hanna and Commissioner Trul. And to Commissioner Engelberger's question, yeah, they definitely need standards. I don't think these are quite there yet, and I think it's a work in progress. I worry about unintended consequences and undue burden on some of these properties, as we've already discussed. So I'm not, I would not be ready to approve these. I think there, we still have some way to go on these. But we definitely need guidelines on these, and protections to maintain the character of the downtown historic district, especially in the case of demolition and rebuilding new buildings. But, yeah, what to do with the existing non-conforming buildings, yeah, without placing undue burden, that's definitely a big question. But I want to make sure we don't have unintended consequences from this, so I wouldn't be ready to move forward with this yet. I think we have a lot of work to do still.
Guidelines and standards. I think right now, we're all using them interchangeably, but I think there has to be a point before anything is adopted that they have to be separated. And one becomes a standard that it has to be, and the other's a guideline that's kind of says it would be nice if...
Yeah. If we want them enforceable, they're going to need to be standards.
Right. Commissioner Engelberger had another comment, and then...
Yeah, I, I mean, I just, I agree. I'm not ready to move forward with these either, but, I mean, how long are we going to go with this? I mean, we need to start moving on some things, otherwise it's just going to keep sitting here and coming back, and coming back, and coming back.
I think it's fair to say, planning commissions only had them for a couple of meetings, so...
Well, I mean...
Two, three?
That's right, no, two.
I guess...
One.
I would like to see us put those two things back in, where the sections you were reading earlier...
Just want to let Rodney decide?
Yeah, well, no, that it's compli, that...
That's what it is now, is Rodney decides.
I guess I'd have to look at the language. I couldn't, I couldn't find the language in here. What I would like to really see is the original language that we have currently, and the red line version.
They're both, they're both in here.
It's in where?
They're both in here.
Both in the packet.
It's in your packet.
He's looking for it, ma'am. Commissioner Bartman, when you're talking about how a building can be taken out of compliance, if we look at, if you've got your guidebook, are you talking about like on page fifty-seven?
This is the original?
Where I have, you know, a Main Street property, where they put something kind of ugly to cover up the historic part?
It's called a slipcover. Yes, and that's, that's...
That's what you were talking about?
Yeah, because that's, there's an opportunity to bring that historic, yeah. So to be clear about what I was trying to say as relates to that, I mean, for me, I want guidelines, some kind of, some kind of evaluation tool. And I know there's a big difference between guidelines and standards, applying to all buildings within a district. I mean, that's how you get quality. But I think, one of the things that I'm looking at is, I think it's important, since we have this document, and it's a good document, to refer to it, rather than having a completely different set of guidelines within, built within the code when we have this. But I think, the way I'm looking at it, is it makes more sense to evaluate on a case-by-case basis, similar to the way the commission normally does for other planned developments, where we have, there's certain things that are hard and fast, such as setbacks. But then with some planned developments, then, now we start looking at materials on the exterior, color choices, possibilities for being able to make adjustments to it within context. And so then, as a commission, we refer to the guidelines within the context of, that's the kind of the goal, but there's an opportunity to really evaluate case-by-case. I mean, that's the way I see it. I don't see why we have this set of guidelines, and then, within the code, completely different wording for the guidelines that are really trying to accomplish the same thing. And I think that's it. So I think for me, rather than making the guidelines now become standard and code, which I don't think that they were written for, that doesn't make sense to me here. I do want to point out, though, that we still have the opportunity for some of these non-conforming buildings, that maintenance doesn't have to kick in the guidelines, because maintenance just goes right through city staff, because if you're just swapping out a window, you're not, the guidelines, I mean, even in the draft version, the rewrite, it wouldn't kick in. So it's not an issue, for example, on the Viking Building, if they're just swapping out windows...
With identical materials.
With identical materials.
If you're taking a window that's one kind of window, and you're changing it and putting in a different kind of window, now it applies.
If it falls within now renovation or structural, within some of the other categories. And I guess that's where we'd have to evaluate, at what point is it maintenance with essentially the same window, but a little bit different, versus changing the design of the building. And I think that becomes a little bit up to the judgment of the city staff on where they would throw it.
I can give you an example. Windows, replacing wood windows with wood windows is met with opposition by the people that need to do so, because there's better materials, whether they're fiberglass or other things, that can make them look very much similar. But it would not be like kind in color, so it wouldn't meet that replacement scenario. So they would have to come into compliance with the code, and this would tell you to essentially spend as much money as you can to use exactly, it says, what does it say? Yeah, use, there's some language in here about one specific thing that says something...
More money is better quality.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah. Essentially, whatever you can afford to replace with the appropriate wood windows, and that's...
And they had to prove to us what they can afford and what they can't?
I'm just telling you, that's the guideline language type, type of thing we're dealing with.
Need to see your nameplate, sorry. Oh, can I just, in response to your comment about what you'd like to see?
Yes.
I understand your perspective, but we have to bear in mind that there's a difference between the kind of ordinance that's being developed here, and say, what you described, the process you described when you're dealing with, say, a planned development zoning, for example. Where, and there's also, and even in the context of, well, let me back up, this gets really complicated. Try and make it simple. When you're dealing with, say, a planned development zoning application, you're dealing with a zoning change, you have a lot of discretion to apply to that process, okay? And there isn't some rigid standard that you have to apply to decide whether to say yes or no, okay? What we are designing here is an ordinance that regulates someone in a different way, and will result in a, what is a quasi-judicial process. What that means is that, instead of you being able to engage in kind of a give-and-take, and exercise some discretion, and decide what makes sense to you from a policy standpoint on a case-by-case basis, that's not what we can do here. What we're doing here is developing a regulation where we have to design a reasonable standard, what the law refers to as a reasonable standard, that will then govern your decision. And when somebody comes in with an application, first of all, they have to be able to look at the ordinance and say, "What is it that, what standard applies to me? What do I have to do to get approved?" If they can't tell by looking at the ordinance, then we've got a problem. And then when they come to you, you have to look at the evidence and say, "Are they meeting this standard or not?" And you're acting in a quasi-judicial capacity, where it's not. And I know that plan commissions are used to a lot of give-and-take in these things, because that's how it tends to go, and that's been your experience, probably, where you work with applicants, and what if you could do this, and you could do that, and in many of those cases, you are acting in more of a legislative policymaking capacity than in a quasi-judicial capacity. I would say, though, in my experience, even when plan commissions are acting in more of a quasi-judicial capacity, they tend to have a habit of not really getting that and not really acting that way. They still engage in that give-and-take. And in many cases, that works out fine. But what we're trying to achieve here is an ordinance that allows you and applicants to be able to look and say, "What do I, what do I need to do?" So like, not dissimilar, for example, to, I'm trying to think of a good example. Well, it should be reasonably possible for someone to look at this ordinance, say you, as a plan commissioner, and look at an application and say, "Do they meet it? Or not? Do they meet this standard or not?" And so that kind of isn't the process that you were describing that you might like to see, if I understood you correctly.
If I can. I see kind of two sides to this, in the sense that there are certain things that are relatively easy to create as standards, like zero setback. The building needs to come up to the line of the sidewalk, or the front line of all the rest of the building. That's something that could be very clearly laid out
Yep.
in something like this.
Yep.
But when you're talking about the shape of a window opening, and some of those things, or color choices, I think that's where you have guidelines that I think would be very difficult to have, without going to the step, which we're trying to bypass here, is designating this as a local historic district. And to me, once you, if we were going to the step of saying, "This is a local historic district, and we've gone through all the process to actually create it," and then you were having these guidelines become now standards, because it has been a locally-designated historic district, then I could start to understand why you would have us looking at some of the details that you are. But the fact is, at this point, it is a design overlay, not a locally-designated historic district. And so, I, to me, to completely codify and make this whole set of guideline standards is bypassing the normal judicial process for creating a local historic district. And so, I still see, a lot of the, a lot of the guidelines here are, it's good advice, it's good design, it gives you a way to understand how you're looking at buildings, and it, I think it's good for educating the commission, but there's still a lot of gray area in any particular proposal that might come to you, on whether or not we could all, some of us, it's not like we would all look at it, and we would all agree and say, "Yeah, 100% it follows the guidelines." Some of us may say, "Well, it follows it in this way," and others may say it doesn't. And so, even using these, as detailed as they are...
Let me ask you a question. So, how would you say no to someone if they came in with a window? And you said, "Well, I'm saying no." Why? On what basis would you say no? Are these guidelines not binding, then? Are you saying that these guidelines would be non-binding? They wouldn't be, they wouldn't be things that you could base a determination on, in that sense?
I think, from the perspective of something, if it's, and I'm trying to, again, because there's a lot of this stuff, I probably really need to chew on some more. But if it's, if it's an issue of the color of the window, or the material of the window, then if I am making a decision on that as a commission member, and I've been told to at least, the goal is these guidelines, and I would use that as my argument, at least, I would say, "I don't think these meet the essence of the guideline, because of the fact that I think that it's the wrong, you know, the wrong vertical position on the building, or it's, whatever it might be." But it's, and that's the way we often approach material choices as part of planned developments. So I'm not talking about being relaxed about things such as setbacks and height requirements, and those kinds of typical guidelines that are part of a lot of our zoning classifications. But when it comes down to some of these material choices, if someone comes in and they have a new material that they want to use on the window, and it looks just like wood from the street, and it costs less, as a commission member, I might say, you know, "I think that actually satisfies the spirit of the guidelines," and I'm all for it.
So if you look at the ordinance that was the redlined one, the one that's redlined tonight shows the changes since the last time you saw it. If you look on the first page, under definitions, we now have a definition of "conform to the design guidelines." It says, "Conform to the design guidelines means consistent with and furthering the objectives of the design guidelines." Okay? So, the way that would operate is, you've got those design guidelines, and what the standard in the ordinance is, under structural review and project review, is it must, you have to show that your project conforms to the design guidelines, which is defined to mean consistent with and furthering the objectives of the design guidelines. So I don't see anything inconsistent with that regulatory approach and what you're saying. But what I also have heard tonight is some question whether those design guidelines are the tools that you think are the appropriate tools to be applying to these projects. See, to me, I think maybe the first, I don't know what comes first here, but I suppose one of the things that's pretty high on the list is, "What tool do you want?"
Let's just take this example of the window.
Yeah.
Under that scenario, so if you look at the design guideline for windows on page thirty-eight, it says, "If new sash must be installed, choose the style, size, and material that will match the original." It goes on to say, "Many window companies offer custom-built windows that can accurately replicate original windows. Some of these include double glazing and other energy-efficient features." Some of these include double glazing and other energy-efficient features." Does that mean you can do that? If it matched, if it must match the original, how can you deviate from the material type?
Sure, Michael, and then Matt also.
Thank you. Couple of things. I don't know if, I think people are just getting confused here. You know, we have standards for building in this city and we have a whole set of standards. When we adopt 517 or change it, that doesn't mean everything that is under 517 is no longer under the rest of our zones and codes. It's still, every building still has to conform with other regulations. What these are is just something to make sure that whatever landmark buildings there are that we have stay landmark buildings. That's why Rodney, that's why they say you need to use wood or, you know, that's why you don't use aluminum siding or vinyl siding on a Victorian house that's on the National Register because it's no longer on the register if you use that kind of stuff.
None of the buildings we're talking about are landmark buildings.
That's what we're talking about here, Rodney. We're talking about historic nature. And, you know, if you want to say, no, it's not, no, they're not local landmarks, that's right. Maybe they ought to be, maybe they ought to be, but we're, the purpose of these is to keep historic buildings historic. That's what the purpose of this stuff is. It's not to say you have to do this or you have to do that. I mean, I think we're getting carried away here. This is far simpler than what we're trying to do here, I think.
Commissioner Hannah, and then Truell.
May for some clarification about the landmark, but what I read under the red line is that this section does not apply to any building or improvement designated as a landmark or located within a historic district.
Correct.
So we're dealing with the buildings, so that means landmarks would take up anything in this district that is a landmark?
Yes.
So my question would be on the process. You know, it, I know we have Todd here who's great at historical, you know, components and those type of details, but just the process of this coming to the planning commission, is that something that we can look at? I mean, is there something where landmarks could take a look at it and make a recommendation to planning or?
Look at what?
Any sort of application as far as how this would be applied.
Well, that's one of the things that this covers. This explained, under the way this is drafted, if you're applying for approval to do a structural project in this district on a building that is not a locally designated landmark, you come to the plan commission.
Right. So what I'm asking is can we change that and have them go to the landmarks? I mean, is it, that's an open question, just to see, I mean, they're the supposedly experts on the historical features of it.
So let me answer it this way because I think this is the best answer I can give you.
Sure.
In my opinion, when you're talking about a legislative decision, I don't see any real challenge or reason not to maybe have a different body serving an advisory capacity to another body. So for example, this body makes a recommendation to the city council about whether to change the zoning of a piece of property from one thing to another. You're making a recommendation on a legislative decision. Could you do that on a quasi judicial decision, which is what this is? Maybe, but it raises some questions that I think are a little difficult to answer. Both, I suppose the, kind of, the big question is what's the point? Because whoever makes the final decision, their decision is going to have to be based on substantial evidence presented to them and the application of that evidence to the standards in the ordinance. Okay? So I don't know how a recommendation from, say, landmarks is useful to you because you've got to start over anyway. You know, it's not like you get to defer to their decision and say, well, I'm going to base my decision in part on the fact that they made this recommendation. Their recommendation isn't one of the, isn't really relevant. Question is, what are the standards? What is the evidence? You don't, you don't see, you don't see that kind of recommendation process in these quasi judicial decisions.
Right.
Yeah. Hold up a second, Truell.
Part of my challenge on this is I feel like we, to your question, Mike, about it getting, making it harder than it is or whatever, and welcome anyone to correct me in terms of perspective here, but if we're talking about landmark buildings, historic, I mean, truly registered, either national, on the National Register or designated as landmarks, that's one thing we can talk about, landmarks commission can deal with. But when I look at this, these are downtown design guidelines. This is, this is no different than us going out to American Family, the American Center. They have design guidelines and they have a certain look and a certain percentage of brick and a certain look and things like that. Old Stock Trails had that in Madison. Whole communities have design guidelines. That's my understanding of what this really is for us. It's what we would like to see our downtown look like. In this case, we've chosen because of our history to tie in that historic look as opposed to saying everything is going to be, you know, red brick and the windows are all going to be whatever. So, you know, that's where I think we struggle because I think sometimes we work so hard to try and make these guidelines because we're trying to save the true historic buildings. I feel like we're trying to capture that on everything else. And that's where I think, at least me personally, I'm having the challenge. And the other challenge I have a little bit, Matt, is that, again, I know you're basically here representing what was drafted by landmarks. And that's where it comes back to us. I mean, we kind of need to make our decisions as to what we would like to see and which parts of the sections, you know, we have a different opinion on. And I think that's probably why we're struggling a little bit tonight, or at least I am, you know, just, we haven't gone through specifically and said, okay, you know, because when I look at this, Commissioner Berman and I had the opportunity to join landmarks when we were talking about the demolition, and that's really where a lot of this started from. And I've made the comment all along, I don't think this body is dying to make, to be the final authority on demolition permits. And frankly, you know, historic buildings, I would rather defer to landmarks. But in terms of how we interpret the rest of this, I think it really, we have to keep coming back to that element that, that these are, these are design guidelines for a particular part of our community and we have to, we have to set and come to those and if we're comfortable with this, that this is what we'd like to see, again, it's a guideline versus a standard, at least as I, as I see them right now, so.
Commissioner Engelberger.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with what Scott's saying. I mean, tonight, we approved a building, a set of buildings, that we told the developer previous, we didn't like it. Come back with something we want. He brought back what we wanted. We approved it tonight. Nelson's building on Main Street. He had houses, entrances that were in the side, side on the front of the building. We wanted, we wanted a front of a building on the front, on the street. We do the same thing in the industrial area where we really screwed up, in my opinion, on one building that's right out by the road there because we didn't make sure that it had windows and doors and everything. It's a box of siding, basically. And that's for us to approve. That's what this stuff is. It's for the city to approve something, what I've said before. If it's a historic building, let's try to make sure that it stays a historic building, not that it becomes something other than, other than what it should be.
You know, I think maybe to make progress, so last meeting, staff was asked to come back with some feedback. So that's what they've done. Why don't we just go through and say either yes, no, or you still need time to think about it on some of these things and then we can just see where we are. So are the design guidelines, the downtown design guidelines that you all have in front of you, do you want that to be what we use? Yes, no, or you want more time to think about that?
I'd like more time.
Define use, be what we use. Define what you mean by that. Is that your standard?
Is that the standard?
Or guidelines?
I know, but it makes a difference. It's going to be a standard.
Then answers no.
Because I don't know what the difference between a standard and a guideline is. So in other words, what it says right now is that.
Here's the window example.
What it says right now in the ordinance is, and then we can use the window example, is somebody comes in with an application, this is set up to say, you have to conform to the design guidelines, which means you have to be consistent with and furthering the objectives of the design guidelines. That's that document. So if you want to use the window example, with that, so if somebody comes in, they want to do what? They want to?
Want to replace a window.
Want to replace a window.
I want to know if it's going to have to be changed or if it's, if it's wood now, if it has to be wood when they put it back in. I mean, that's, I'm trying to boil it down.
And is that, and will that booklet?
Booklet says, "If a new sash must be installed, choose the size, style, and material that will match the original."
So they'd have to come in, in my opinion, they'd have to come in and say, this was what the original was, whether that's what I had, what I'm replacing or not, this is what the original was, and I have to match that. That's the standard.
And that is called historic restoration.
However, does that apply to every building downtown?
That's a separate question. Let's just, let's keep it one at a time. So the first question is, that we're talking about is, there's some concern about whether we should use the booklet and everything in the booklet and say you have to show that you're consistent with and furthering the objectives of that booklet? And everything in that booklet that says should really is going to be interpreted to mean shall? Should you do that or should you say, no, wait a minute, let's develop something different to use as our standards? And so.
I heard several folks say, so don't let me speak for you, but I heard several folks say I, I need to study this a little bit more before I can say that everything in here is a shall.
Commissioner Hannah said he would like more time, I heard that.
Commissioner Bartlett, and then Berman.
I guess Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I'm reading this, it states that we shall approve it if they can demonstrate it meets these guidelines criteria.
Yes.
But I don't read where it says that we cannot approve it if it does not meet it. If we determine it meets the intent of the criteria, I don't see where it says we can't approve it. It would just take more.
You mean, are you saying it doesn't say like, well, if it doesn't meet the design guidelines?
We can't have no say on it. We have to deny it. We have some leeway on it.
Matt's got the floor right now.
I guess.
Okay. Says the plan commission shall approve, I'm looking at our structural projects, the plan commission shall approve an application if the applicant demonstrates that the structural project will conform to the design guidelines. So your concern is that if somebody comes in and they don't show that they'll conform, that you don't think you have the authority to say no?
Well, do we have the authority to say yes?
No.
If the window?
I don't think so.
No.
But if you think it needs to be more clear, I can, there's another way of saying this, there's two ways of saying this. I chose to do it this way. The other way to say it is, the plan commission shall not approve an application unless the applicant demonstrates that the structural project will conform to the design guidelines. That's another way of saying it, but it presents the same problem.
Okay.
Because then, let's say they come in and they do show that they meet it, doesn't say you have to approve it. Does that mean you can say no because it, no. So to me, take your pick, but if you're uncomfortable, I can say it the other way.
It's not what I heard Matt ask. Clarify what you were asking, Matt.
Yeah, and that's the problem for me is that we don't have any leeway if they meet the intent, like the window scenario, if it matches the characteristics of historic, but it's a new material or something not listed in the guideline. I don't see where it says we can't approve it if it meets the intent of the guideline.
So if you decide as a plan commission that it furthers the objectives of the design guidelines and is consistent with the design guidelines, you would have the authority to approve it. Now, if somebody raises their hand and says, this is clearly inconsistent with the guidelines because the guideline says it must do this, it doesn't do that, then you shouldn't approve it.
Great.
Now, if what you're saying is, well, gee, can we build some flexibility in there that says like, well, even though it doesn't really meet the guidelines, can we still kind of decide what the intention was behind it? And if we think the intention is being satisfied, say yes? That's very hard for me to draft. It's really, I don't know how to do that.
Okay.
Okay. Commissioner Berman.
So two answers. One, the first answer for me is that when I look at the guidelines, I think it's a good document, it's a good guidelines, but if it's going to be used as a standard, I think it should be read to see if there's places that need to be modified to make it work as a standard. And it might be clarifications on such as, because the way I, the way I interpret and the way it's normally interpreted in the field is that when it says match, it doesn't mean it has to be identical structurally. They're typically talking about a visual match. And it could be something just as clear as just making sure you change it to a visual match to make it easier to interpret as a standard. So that's one thing. But I would ask the question because I agree with Matt in a sense that I look at as, it certainly says that if you fulfill the guidelines, then we should, we should be saying yes. But if you miss on a couple of points, but it's great design, then we have the potential to say enough, to say yes. But if you're saying we can't, I, the question that comes to my mind is all the non-conforming uses that we are approving all the time. It comes to us and we say, well, this is not conforming, but it's before the plan commission because of your opportunity, I mean, we have the, we have the ability to approve non-conforming uses all the time. And so even if.
Conforming parts of a structure, you can't, you can't expand the non-conforming aspect of a structure. I think that's what you might be referring to.
Well, if we, for example, I mean, again, I wouldn't, maybe conforming and non-conforming is not the best wordage or verbiage, but the idea is more along the lines of what Matt's asking, is that sometimes things don't fit perfectly, but it's close enough that it fulfills the.
So that's why the language I chose was, "Conform to design guidelines means consistent with and furthering the objectives of." Okay? So the word consistency is also used when it comes to the comprehensive plan. So the legal requirement is, for a zoning change, for example, is that it must be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So I think the question would be, is there something about the application that is clearly contradicts one of the standards? If that's the case, I think the answer would have to be no. I mean, our standard says brick and you're proposing aluminum.
Sure.
That's inconsistent. Let's say that you can't find any inconsistency with it and you think it furthers the objectives of the guidelines, but gee, it'd be nice if you went a little further, did a little this, did a little that, which we can also find some support for in our guidelines. I don't know that you could force them to do it. As long as what they're proposing to do is in fact consistent with the guidelines and furthers the objectives of the guidelines, I think you'd have to be able to point to something and say, here's where you are failing to be consistent with and further the clear objectives or standards or requirements of the guidelines. Now, I'm not saying these guidelines are perfect and if you're volunteering to review them, to work on trying to improve upon them for purposes of this application, that'd be awesome.
I think before I could say yes, use them, which was the original question, I would have to read them with the mind toward, okay, now we're going to apply this as a standard.
A regulatory tool.
Not just as a guideline, and I think I might look at it differently.
And that's the whole reason we brought this issue to you.
Yes.
So just to go on, we've got Commissioner Hannah saying he'd like more time, Commissioner Berman saying, boy, I think I'd need to review these and maybe make some adjustments before I'd be comfortable applying them as a regulatory standard. That's two. Anybody else?
My challenge with this is partly is, again, are we, are we applying this, trying to apply this to all the buildings or are we exempting?
That's the next question.
You wouldn't let me ask that question.
That'll be the next question.
You have to wait to.
Let's assume that it's just the buildings that you wanted to apply to.
Commissioner Hannah.
You said you'll answer later?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's skip to the next question. Next question, should this apply to every building in the district or should, do you believe that we should identify some process of saying, you know, of identifying buildings that it should not apply to based on their total non-conformity to anything?
Should apply to the contributing buildings.
So Commissioner Engelberger says, it's just to apply to contributing buildings?
That's what I think.
I would agree. Third.
It's three.
I would agree with the question though, what will apply then to the non-contributing? I mean, what's, what standards kick in for those buildings?
The other, the underlying standards and the, now, so let me back up. So with respect to, with respect to anything that you want to do to that existing building short of removing it and replacing it, shall we say? As I see it, if we were to exempt it, the building from these standards, from this section, then it would just be governed by the underlying zoning regulations in that district, which is the central business district?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the building code. And the building code.
Okay. And that has all the, the zero setback and all this other-
That would tell you, yeah, where the position is in the site, in the height.
And I think, in answering this question, I think there's really two parts to it. The first part is, should some buildings be kind of exempt? And then we should talk about, how far does that exemption go? Does that just go to stuff you want to do to that building? What happens if that building is removed and someone wants to build a new structure there? What, if anything, should happen to that new structure?
Sure.
If I can, just, if everybody looks at page 61, take a look at 61. I believe that's the cinema, right?
Yep.
And it shows what they would like to see as a new facade, if that's a new, you know, redone building. We, we do this kind of thing in every, in other communities do this all the time.
Do what?
Tell Walmart, "This is what it has to look like, like our building out on KPW's site." We told them, "This is what it has to look like." They brought us some things, we approved it. We can do this kind of thing. This isn't something that-
I just thought you said you don't want, you want to exempt some of these buildings from these requirements.
I am.
Okay.
I did say that.
But new construction.
But what I'm saying is, for any type of construction, we do that now. It's like, it's like people here are saying, "You can't tell us what to do, we can build anything we want." No, you can't. You have to build to what our standards are. And if we say, "These are our standards, this is what you have to build to." We do that now, all the time. Other communities do that all the time.
Nobody said you couldn't do, nobody said that you couldn't do that.
Well, that's basically what people are talking about.
The question that I asked Michael was, what if, excuse me, this is on the page 61, our current cinema cafe.
Yeah.
And what if Denny and Patty came in and said, "Well, we would like to improve the facade of our building, but we can't do, we can't afford this." Would that them, them, could that then prevent them from any, any kind of improvements to the front of their building, if their only option was to go all this way or no way at all?
It is what it is right now, you know? It is what it is right now, so.
Well, let me back up, just to refocus the question. So I think I heard, basically, four out of five of you at least say that you believe that there should be some way of identifying non-conforming or non-contributing buildings and exempting them from at least, these require the design guidelines with respect to doing things with those buildings themselves. So I think I heard almost unanimous perspective on that, if not unanimous. The, the next question is, how do you go, what do you want to do, how do you want to identify those buildings? The, you want-
That they're already identified?
Where?
Do you want to use the contributing standard from here?
Right. Do you want to do that?
But they're already identified.
They're, they are in here.
You identified 18 buildings? I mean, are they, are they 18 that are somehow or another here, or is it some other list?
Are they specifically identified in that book, correct?
Yes.
So the, as, non-contributing as identified in the design guidelines?
Uh, we'll confirm the document, but yes, I believe they're right, right in here. They are listed, there isn't a list, but it shows it in the pictures.
I have a quick question.
Sorry, sure. Commissioner Hanna.
Um, and maybe you're going to get to this, but, non-conforming structure that is on conforming building, so-
You mean, they got the bad skin on the good bones, kind of thing?
I guess, or, like, we're looking at the back alley. That stair, that wooden staircase structure, do you remember the picture?
I think so.
Yeah.
So is that on a contributing building?
Let's say it is.
Say, we got a contributing building, so, and then there's a structure on the back.
I guess, I, I would see it apply to any street front, whether it's Main Street or a side street.
That gets back to the design guidelines. Because right now, if you look at that booklet, I think it includes, near the rear, it includes the rear of the building.
It does, the guidelines do.
So, one of the things you guys have to decide is, do you want that? Or do you want to say, "No." Doesn't apply to the rear, only applies to the front. That's one of the reasons we asked about, do you want these design guidelines?
You may even say, "Street facade," because-
Street facade, right.
Some of the alleys are as visible from street areas.
Like, that one's visible from where I parked tonight, you know?
So that gets back to what the guidelines say.
Right. And I would, I would like building owners to put as much money as they can into the facade, and not have to dedicate a huge sum of money to something that doesn't really affect the street experience. So I guess I struggle with how to do that on a case-by-case basis, and how do you overlay that to everything?
Well, the starting point is, what does your ordinance say? The way, the way those design guidelines are set up, if they're adopted as they are in this way, the back of the building is covered. So if someone wants to do something, I guess, to the back of the building, then they'd have to be consistent with and further the objectives of that standard.
How do you guys feel about the back, compared to the street side, or?
Can we just do one thing at a time?
Yeah, that's fine.
Let's come back to that.
All right.
So-
So, to answer your earlier question about contributing, not contributing, so I'd chime in on the fact that the guidelines should apply for contributing buildings, but I think it should also apply for new construction. So if, if a building is completely removed, or if there happens to be a vacant lot within the, the boundaries of the, of the district-
Yep.
To me, a new building should conform to the guidelines.
Okay, so-
That's, that's my opinion.
Let me just summarize what I've got, and I'm going to take a note. So, first, the guidelines would apply, well, I think you just said it, we draft this applicability provision to basically say, guidelines would apply to maintenance, structural projects, and, the other one, renovation, to, to, maintenance, renovation, and structural projects on existing contributing buildings, with contributing buildings being those buildings identified as contributing buildings in the 1993 design guidelines, and would apply to the construction of any new building in the district. The guidelines would not apply to any-
Existing buildings.
Maintenance, renovations, structural projects, demolition, anything with respect to a, a non-contributing building. So that's what my notes say right now.
The demolition, the demolition throws me off a little bit, just because it could be one with one of these slip, I mean, it could have all the bones and have the slip cover, and then we're tearing down the bones because of the slip cover, because it didn't qualify as contributing. But I had to think about the demolition for a second. Otherwise, I agree with the way you worded everything.
It might, if we went and referenced each non-conforming, you might be able to point out, if there is a building that does have a-
In a lot of cases, I could guess, but looking at a couple of historic photos, or-
Hard to say.
Yeah.
Just, for example, the Stoughton Store building, that's a contributing building. It's got a slip cover over it, so that would still need to comply.
Okay.
Just for that example.
The Viking building, is there a historic building underneath that?
No, not that I don't believe so.
Facade, or is that something that was-
Looked like that since it was Stoughton State Bank back in the-
All right, so it was, it was built to that quality.
Yeah, I believe so.
All right. All right. In most cases, I think they've probably got them tagged correct, I mean, the way I would too. So, it's just, you know, there's always a chance that, like my building would have been contributed.
Just as a case in point, Evansville has a lot of very historic buildings in their downtown, too. So, last year, maybe a little bit longer, the Night Owl was a restaurant that was in one of their historic buildings, and it burnt, totally burnt down, the whole thing. And the owner of the Night Owl building worked with the, the city and their commissions for a bit, and then they said, "You know what? I cannot afford to build," back to what you're saying, "Must be built for me to be in my current location." So right now, that site is empty, and they've built a new building outside of town. So I think, I'm not, I'm not debating whether or not we should say if it burns down, you have to build one just like it, because I support our historic downtown, but I also want there to be something, something there, and I don't know how that situation is, is helped.
And that's where it comes in, like I said, on page 61, or whatever it was, that we could say, "Here's what you have to build to." You know, "Here's the design you have to build to." I mean-
Right, and that's what-
Has to look like it's historic.
Well, I think we talked about it before, when, when Kaganza Plaza, remember, that's a real-life Stoughton tragedy? When the Kaganza Plaza block of our downtown had that terrible fire, and that all burnt, the whole thing burnt. And when the current Kaganza Plaza was built, I don't know that they would have, I don't know that they would have, just put it that way, to, to the standard of how it was historically.
Like I said, it's just like us telling QuickTrip, or, or Walmart, or whoever, building a building, "This is what you got to design to." And it happens all over the country, every day, all over this Dane County, all over the state. It happens every day, every place. So don't be afraid to tell people, "This is what you have to do," because everybody does that.
Commissioner Hanna.
Sure. So if for, you know, the next 40 years, we have no interest in that site, do we just leave it open?
Well, that's, what they brought to us addresses that, and maybe, right or wrong, that's what they brought to us.
Right. Commissioner Berman.
You know, I, and I, I don't know the Night Owl in detail, but I know there's a difference in application from building back what was there before, which would be costly, considering the, the materials, the craftsmanship, the design, all the details and stuff like that. But you could, you could build something to the guidelines without having to actually recreate what was there before. I mean, there's, there's ways, I mean, they could, if it was a brick building, it could still be a wood building, because wood is not precluded here, because there's wood in other parts of the district. It doesn't say, in, in that particular site, it has to be brick in these guidelines. It just says it needs to be quality materials, has to have a certain height, massing, those kinds of details. But once the building is gone, it doesn't say that it has to match the material. So I think there's the potential within these guidelines to build something back at a more cost-effective way that would still meet the spirit of the guidelines and, and satisfy the guidelines in a way.
That would need to be clear. I didn't, didn't see that, or hear that, that way. Oh, to person true. I'm sorry.
And ultimately, that's where I keep coming back. I mean, I live in the world of, of make-believe, up in the Dells, where we create whole-new facades, whole-new looks, things like that. There's a discussion, the difference between saying we have to build, that we're going to declare some of those buildings as, as if they were not historic. Again, it's one thing to restore a historic building, it's another to say we want it to have a, a historic downtown look. There are ways to do, you know, Mike's, Mike's point about, about the cinema cafe, I mean, if, if, you know, if they, if they had, had the, the funds to do that, I mean, that store would, that would look great if we could have broken it up in a series of 25-foot-wide, you know, rollhouse-type, type thing. And, and to Mike's comment about, about Walmart, that was part of the discussion. We, we said we wanted to break up the mass of, of that building. They did it, they found creative ways to do it, that I don't think added, you know, 25% or more to the cost. And so, candidly, the, the Kaganza Plaza should never have been built with that facade. I mean, there, there should have been something more there, and I think that was more of a, my sense is, were, were you going there, and that was it, perhaps there was an element of desperation, it was like, "We need to get something, we got to fill the hole." And, and instead of looking at it and saying, you know, there, there's a way to have made that building match and bring value to the buildings next to it, it inadvertently, or whatever, created something that doesn't belong, that doesn't match the overall feel of the rest of that block. And I would hope that we have, we have more, I think my, my concern is, I want guidelines, and truly, guidelines that we can follow, that we can follow, as opposed to, to hard standards that require, that might limit people from doing things. But at the same time, we need to, we then need to back up our guidelines and follow those guidelines, and, and asking people to, to bring things, you know, that, that fit with, with our overall vision for downtown, so.
So let me just summarize what I have. With respect to exempt, non-exempt, this section, this section, meaning section 78-517, applies to buildings designated as contributing in the design guidelines, and to the construction of new buildings in the district. This section does not apply to maintenance, renovation, structural projects, or demolition of non-contributing buildings. That's what I have my notes so far. I know you wanted to think about demolition, but at least that's a start for that issue. And if the plan commission says, "Yeah, that's, we're comfortable moving forward on that basis for now," we can modify that ordinance and plug that in. So I'm seeing a bunch of heads nod. So let me go back to the first question then, which is, now, understanding which buildings and sites this would apply to and wouldn't apply to, should the ordinance use as its set of standards that design guidelines booklet in its entirety, or not? I have Commissioner Hanna saying he'd like more time to review it, Commissioner Berman indicating he'd like to review it and maybe offer some changes to that.
Okay, thanks. Sure. Commissioner Engelberger.
Well, I, I think it would be smart to have Landmarks take a look at it, to see if it pretty much conforms now, you know, compared to 1993, to, you know, Landmarks-type standards, and possibly even, you know, have them review those types of buildings and give us a recommendation, say, "Yes, this does comply." You know, rather than us sitting here trying to say, argue whether it complies or not, even though most of us don't know much about landmark status type, you know?
So you, you think Landmarks Commission should look at the booklet and make recommendations on changes?
Absolutely. Get that, and also possibly be a recommending body to us with landmark-type buildings.
Oh, on whether, on projects, on specific projects? Okay. That's getting, that's a procedural issue, so.
Sure. Commissioner Hanna.
Yeah, I mean, as I've, as I've looked through it, I mean, before this meeting, I didn't, I didn't really look, you know, look through this page by page, but as I have looked through it, you know, even some of the guidelines themselves, you know, with respect to some of those, the wording that is now going to be in "should" or "shall," is now going to be-
"Shall."
Yeah. You know? But, you know, there's other, you know, encourage retention of horizontal elements. There, there still is a little bit of flexibility in the guidelines themselves. You know, just, just from what I've read in, in some of these, I mean, some are, are very, you know, standard, you know, building height should be within 10% of the mean of, you know, the buildings on the block, and things like that, but, you know, there are, there is some flexibility even within the guidelines, which is one thing that I think that we're looking for, as far as to have, you know, yes, it needs to have, you know, what was I just looking at? Horizontal banding, but, you know, where does that fall? Does it have to have so many horizontal bands, or, you know, it's not as strict as kind of like what you were talking about, Todd, where setback, I mean, that's in there, you know, setback is in there, that's straight up. Building height, that's pretty much dictated on the existing buildings, but as far as some of the aesthetic features, there's still offers some flexibility in there, as far as, as far as that goes. I know, Matt, when you were talking about it earlier, you're like, "Well, no, we need to be able to take these and say, 'Well, because of this, it's a no.'" So in some of those gray areas, are we still okay to have those in there, or do you, would you think that we shouldn't?
I'm comfortable with a certain amount of gray. Let me, let me, so, I think that this definition- Let me, let me, so, I think that this definition of conform to the design guidelines, there's kind of two parts to it, and they're kind of at war with each other a little bit. The first part is the first sentence, which is, says, "Conform means consistent with and furthering the objectives of." Then, the next sentence gets a little harsher, right, where "should" means "shall," and, and other similar words that are permissive in nature, "shall be," the permissive word shall be construed to be mandatory. I put that in partly because I was getting some feedback from staff with their discomfort with the word "should," and concern about, well, if somebody, if it just says "should," then what does that mean? And, so, I guess my, I think I would be, I don't, I don't know how this could play out ultimately, and, you know, you can't predict the future, right? But if you took out the heart, the, if you just left my first sentence in, which said, "consistent with and furthering the objectives of the design guidelines," and you got rid of the rest of that definition, where you, the mandatory language, I still think you could then apply those guidelines in a meaningful way, and say, if somebody is doing something that is clearly at odds with something that's described as a "should," that's inconsistent with the design guidelines. Just because it says "should" doesn't mean that it doesn't mean anything. So, I would personally be comfortable taking out that language that talks about "should" means "shall," and just going with the first sentence, which says, you know, your application has to be consistent with and further the objectives of those design guidelines. So, then, back to what do those design guidelines mean? If it says you should do something, in my mind, if somebody is coming in and doing the opposite of what they, it says they should do, you should say, that's not going to get approved.
So, you can still apply it and enforce it?
You should apply.
Yeah.
I think you should say, it's inconsistent with it, now you should get turned down. Now, are there going to be things where it's a gray area, and you're going to say, well, that, that's really not inconsistent with these guidelines? Maybe the guidelines don't really address it very well, or very clearly. And then, what gets interesting is, this is where it gets really interesting. Whose call is it? Is it yours, or is it the owner's call? They're the ones spending the money on it. And if there isn't something in those guidelines, tell them, don't do it that way. What gives you the ability? And I know Mr. Engelberger says, people tell people what to do all the time, but-
If you have the guidelines, you got to have the guidelines.
I think, right, so, in my opinion, if somebody's doing something that the guidelines, and, and they're not in any way inconsistent with your guidelines, if there's not, if there's not something you can point to in there that says, no, you can't do that, if they want to do it their way, you should let them do it their, their way.
Yeah, so, so, for example, if they don't have horizontal banding-
And this says you should have horizontal banding?
Yeah, and, but they don't have it, but they, it doesn't say that, it says, uh-
What I don't have it-
Yeah, it says, "When horizontal rhythms are found, new construction or rehabilitation of existing buildings should encourage retention of horizontal elements that exist. New construction should employ the vocabulary of horizontal banding that exists." So, in that case, I would interpret that as new construction needs to have, or should have, which can be applied as you need to meet that.
If you come in and you don't have that-
Right.
Now, you're inconsistent with something that's expressly called for, right?
Yep.
So, I'd say, you could say, no, you got to do that.
So, I think we need to look at these, someone needs to look at these. We do, or Landmarks needs to, and, or staff can look at and say, I don't know how I would interpret that, or this is a gray area that we need to clear up. And then, there's some that we can just check off and say, yeah, you know, that makes sense.
You're talking about going through a review of the guidelines?
Yeah, that, that's what I mean about, you know, meeting more time, or, you know, Commissioner Barman.
I'll, I'll give you an example, one of the gray areas, and it, it comes down to who makes that decision. Select on page thirty, where it says guideline for shop windows. It says, "Where original window frames exist and are in good condition, they should," or if we change it, "must be retained." But then, it says, "If the frames are deteriorated, they can be replaced." So, now, who determines whether, okay, because everything deteriorates a little bit, so at what point, is it deteriorated to the point where they can say, no, I have to replace it, or we say, no, it's in pretty good condition? So, I think that's, those are places where you probably want to have at least some thought put into, can we make it a little less gray than it is? Because otherwise, I think you're going to get into this, he said, she said.
Hey, I am totally, if, if somebody, if you, if somebody with the kind of qualifications necessary to go through that book and make those kinds of adjustments can do that, I'm all for it. I'm not the one to do that. I don't think I have the qualifications.
It's going to take Commissioner's input. I keep coming back to the window material example, but I still haven't heard a definitive. It says, "If a new sash must be installed, choose the size, style, size, and material that will match the original." So, does that mean no, no change?
It says it has to be, but it doesn't say that, though.
Says "will match." I would interpret that to mean, it's got to be replaced with wood.
Or someone talked about brick. Does that have to be brick?
Then, you get into the language of "match."
Rodney, the problem is, if you, if you replace it with plastic, or vinyl, or something like that, it's no longer historical. That's the problem.
Good point. That's what the problem is. If you keep getting on this, it's, these buildings aren't historic. What this document is-
What are they? They're listed on the National Register.
Not, not, not all the ones downtown.
No.
Listed as contributing buildings on the National Register, my understanding. Now, I may be wrong about that, but-
To the district.
I think Peggy could get us the proper-
Contributing to the district.
The district. So, so, I mean, you know, the idea is-
They're not local landmarks.
I didn't, I didn't say they were local landmarks. My understanding is they're, they're on the National Registry-
Yep.
As, contributing to the district. And, you know, so, yes, they are historic buildings.
Even, even the Secretary of Interior Standards, though, the national standards, allow for replacement material that visually matches, because that's what they're mostly concerned with. I mean, aluminum siding doesn't visually match wood.
I get it. I agree with you.
But there is material now, there's new technologies that will visually match, and I think that's, so I think if we, if we look at some of the changes in the, in the Secretary of Interior Standards, and we read this as, how are we going to interpret this as a, as a governing body, then I think you just find those places, and we try to figure out how to do it. And another place I would allow for revision, and just to go back to something you said earlier, in terms of contributing, it has to be contributed as specified in nineteen ninety-three. The fact is, when, when we were at one of the, the Landmarks meetings, there was a gentleman who owned a building that was originally non-contributing, but he had specifically put investment in the building to make it contributing. To me, once someone has gone to that stage, and now it is contributing, even if it wasn't in nineteen ninety-three, we should revise the list.
And, and that's where, I guess, Mike, kind of, when, when Mike was suggesting about having Landmarks go back and perhaps go through this as well, I don't know that, that they need to, to go through the standards again, but I think the key is, that's what we need, we need their guidance as to what are contributing buildings, that we can adopt the, the design standards that we're looking for, with their input.
In my opinion, though, they still have to conform with keeping it a national or a historic building.
I think it's important for commissioners to look at it also, because time will go by, and it will need your, your eyes to see, do I understand that? Will, you know, I'm not on the Landmarks Commission, or I'm not, I'm not, Todd, who understands all of these landmark statutes and things. So, would, will the next group of commissioners, whoever they might be, is it clear enough for them to understand what is meant by it?
That's why Landmarks, in my opinion, should be in, in part of the process of-
Well, they've given us their recommendations.
Well, I think they should take a bigger role, because they're the experts in this type of thing, that we aren't.
If I could just refocus the discussion briefly. So, we were talking about, should we use the design guidelines, that booklet as it is, and we've heard, I've had Commissioner Hanna say, I think I need more time to look at it. I've heard Commissioner Barman say the same thing, I'd like to review it and make some, possibly some recommended, recommendations for change. Heard Commissioner Engelberger suggest that the Landmarks Commission should perhaps look at it. Any other input on that issue?
I would want more time on it, too.
You'd want more time on it? Okay, so, clearly, so, here's, here's, I guess, my question. Clearly, there's a consensus that some time should be spent reviewing those guidelines and considering making adjustments. And, so, I guess you'll have to decide, is that something you each want to do individually, and come back, and then regroup, and share your work, or how do you want to go about doing that work?
You want to come meet with staff? You're more than welcome to do that, too. I, I mean, seriously, I, I, if you took each one of these sections, and you looked at the section that talks about guidelines for each one of those, and vetted it out amongst a couple of people, and you said, what, what needs to change, or does anything need to change in this particular section, I think you'd make some serious headway. Because each one of us are going to have to reconcile that, but I think if there was some pairing, or group of people that wanted to try to do that, I think, I think there might be opportunities to make progress. Because I think there is, you need to bounce the ideas off of one another, or as it, with me, or with the staff, or whomever, just so we can talk through, we need to communicate whatever the message is to whoever comes to our office. So, that's what we want to be able to do.
Let's go back to the master list, your, your memo.
Yeah.
Because we've talked about two of the biggies.
Yeah.
Let's see what else there is there. So, we've talked about five. We've talked about six.
Yep. You touched on seven.
Seven, and I think seven, that's part of the review of the design, development of the guidelines themselves.
Whether you want it to be a facade, do you want to look at any of the rear of the buildings? I think I generally heard the facades, but-
And, and, and it seems to me that one, maybe the easiest way to address that is through your work on what the guidelines or the standards themselves are. Is there anything else under seven, Rodney, that you think they need to talk about?
I mean, I think a lot of that is encompassed within the guideline.
Yep.
Colors, signage, that kind of thing, too, you know?
Right. Eight?
Just highlighting, there is no local districts in the city, but if this became a local district, the Landmarks would have full control over all the look and the feel of it. Planning Commission wouldn't have a role. Because Chapter thirty-eight is a Landmarks ordinance, and, and that applies to all their districts, and there is not a locally, a local district at this point.
Including non-contributing structures, if it became a local district.
If it became a local district, then-
They would have to develop regulations for all of them.
They have to figure out how to deal with them, yeah.
Yeah.
Nine.
Was really talking mainly about colors of building facades, and changes in materials for items such as woods and door, windows and doors that look the same as original, kind of getting to that whole-
Match.
Material type.
Yeah.
Does it match?
Mm-hmm.
We just highlight that the public hearing is currently proposed to be held at the Common Council for all non-local landmark demolition requests.
Right. So, the way that ordinance is drafted right now, this draft, for demolition, it just goes to the City, Common Council. Common Council has to hold a public hearing and make a decision. Plant Commission does not play a role in that process, as this is currently drafted. And, and the reason it's that way is what I talked about earlier, in terms of the need, ultimately, for someone to make a final judicial determination, their decision has to be their own decision. They can't say, well, basing my decision on this recommendation I got from the Plant Commission. They're going to have, somebody has to apply the evidence to the standard and make a decision. And so, in my mind, there's no reason to go to both Plant Commission and the City Council. If you guys want to do it that way, I'll change it and do it that way, but I, I don't think it makes sense.
That, that kind of came out of the Main Street building demolition, that change?
That, no, that just came out of discussion with staff about how to, I mean, the way this was drafted when it came out of Landmarks, I think, you had to have a recommendation from Landmarks and from the Plant Commission, and then it went to the City Council for a final decision. That was what came out of Landmarks.
Yeah.
After discussion with staff, and after the last meeting, we tweaked it to say, it's just the Common Council.
Because if they're supposed to be making the decision independent of what you recommend anyhow, what, what is it going to be? What, what role will that really play?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, and, and I am, too, I agree, and just assuming that we're going to, that there'd be, as a council, we would get some comments from both your, your staff and perhaps Landmarks, I mean, so we've got something, so it doesn't, it isn't just a-
Well, that's a really great question. Let's talk about that. Somebody wants to apply for demolition, and they come in and they say, here's my application, I meet the standard, here's why, here's my evidence, I rest my case. So, the way this tends to work is, there isn't, it doesn't be a public hearing, so certainly members of the public have the right to come in and testify, and, and offer evidence in opposition to it. Staff's role tends not to be to say, we're going to figure out how to build a case either for or against somebody. It tends not to be staff's role in these things. So, the way this tends to work is applicant comes in, makes their presentation, and now, I suppose the City Council could say to staff at the hearing, well, we have questions, we are going to, we're going to, we're going to not make a decision, we're going to adjourn, we're going to direct staff to come back with answers to certain questions, and then we're going to reopen the hearing, and we're going to take more evidence. I suppose that could happen.
Well, we do, we do have opinions from staff on multiple issues all the time, when we, when we bring it from committee to the council.
Whether the complaint, whether the ordinance is or not.
The example tonight I would have is, okay, Mr. Arnett came in with, with a plan. You hadn't even reviewed it yet. We're, we're giving response, that, under, under Matt's scenario, that's, if, if we didn't have anything to do, that would go right to council. And the first thing that we should be asking is, okay, how does this meet all of our standards, guidelines, those kinds of things? So, I guess I'm-
Yeah, well, you, you're going to need support from staff, I suppose, and you probably will ask them for it. You'll probably say, and it's going to be, it's not going to be easy. Probably going to have to have a hearing, take evidence, decide whether you want staff to come, to conduct their own independent investigation and provide evidence, whether they're going to assist you in evaluating the evidence that's been presented, and applying it to the standards. And if you look at, we haven't even talked about the standards yet for approving demolition, but they're unusual, and we should talk about them before you're done.
Yep. I have a quick question there about the demolition. So, the, the codes that we reviewed last month, you know, thirty-eight and then seventy-eight, you know, that was, talked a lot about, the demolition, and what are the requirements post-demolition, and all of that stuff. So, in that case, how would that apply? Would the council just interpret that new, those revisions that we were discussing?
I, I'm sorry, I don't understand your question.
So, last month, what were the, the codes that we were looking at?
Well, thirty-eight, which-
Is landmark.
Is landmarks.
Yep.
And this one.
This one here.
And this one, at the very end, addresses the standards for approval of demolition.
Mm-hmm.
Provides four different possible bases that someone might seek approval for demolition.
And so, then, that's what the council would-
They'd have to decide whether-
That's what you're saying, yeah.
They'd have to decide whether the applicant has demonstrated that they meet one of those four requirement tests.
Let's review them. That's where, that's where you're going, right?
Uh, that's one of the things that you have to decide, is whether you believe that, well-
Let's walk through them.
Yeah, one of them, one, the first question theoretically is, should demolition be even covered? Second question should be, if it is, what standard should govern the decision? Second question should be, if it is, what standard should govern the decision? You know, here's the big thing that came out of landmarks. You can see this in each of the first two standards. They're saying, let's see here. Under one and two, you have to actually, before you can get approval to demolish an existing building, you have to get a permit to replace it. You have to go through the process necessary to get approval to replace it.
So you'd have to go through the process of all of this. Earlier sections of the same section.
Yeah, you'd have to come in under this section and get approval for a structural project, and you'd need to get a building permit.
Have all your design done.
Get all your design done.
So they'd be coming through to us to get all the historic stuff, all that, everything approved by us. So essentially, they're getting a recommendation for the building from us. But they could go to the council and then they say, no. Could happen, right? But in a sense, they're, if they're using one of these...
One of the first two.
Two, it's already been approved through the planning process, correct?
What's been approved? The new building's been approved?
The new building, right.
Yeah, but not demolition of the existing?
Not demolition, right. But, I don't know what, I mean, as far as the planning commission determining on a, on a demolition, I guess what I'm trying to say is that there is, there is a recommendation as far as the future of the building for the council to look at, so it has been looked at by us disregarding demolition.
Council doesn't make a decision on structural project.
I know, I know. But it's, it is, it's an approval by our, our body here before that.
Council will know that before they make their decision on whether or not the current building could be demolished.
If, if I'm an applicant under one, under item one here, yeah, I have to be able to show the council, plant commission has approved my new building.
I would, I would hope, I guess it, it seems really kind of crossing so many different paths. If I'm on the planning commission and someone's coming to me talking about a building that is existing, it's going to have to be demolished. So I'm going to look at it as like, I, I don't know, it seems like a whole lot of work to go through that process without knowing that it's ever going to move forward. But I also understand needing to know what's going to happen after it's demolished. I think that, that's the real struggle about it. I'm going to be looking, because I'm going to have to base it on that this building is gone, it's already demolished, right? That's going to have to be my mindset.
Yeah.
If I was looking at it from an applicant's standpoint, you know, I guess I'd be felt very misled if I came in and went through this process, worked together with staff, got approval, and all of a sudden I get to common council without any sort of notion or inclination, we're not recommending anything about demolition, good luck. And then get to council and almost feel like getting blindsided, like, but I've been working on this with you guys and now you're going to tell me no? To me, that's a really tough message to send to somebody.
Well, you want to change the language? I'm ready.
I'm opening it to discussion, to figure out how does that process, how does that process flow?
Well, I mean, here's the discussion of landmarks.
Can I make one, one suggestion?
Yeah.
Can a demolition permit be approved but contingent, contingent or conditional upon approval of building plans, then going through the process so that it's not like going through the process to demol?
It's not the last step, it's one of the first steps.
But does, but does the, you know, and then, then does it go back to council to have to approve the building plans after we approve it? Or do we have the final say? Does council feel like they don't have enough information to say, well, let's demolish it, but I have no idea what you're going to build? And then leave it up to us to say, yep, let's do it, they already approved it?
Okay, so let me answer your question. So I guess here's another way to set it up. But before I answer the question, the heart of the, the real fundamental policy issue is this. Is the city going to say, you must replace a building that you demolish within, and you must be legally committed to do that in some way, and you must have approval to do that in some way, before you get to tear down the existing building? That's one way to go, and that's the way that landmarks commission went. The other way to go, I suppose, from a philosophical or policy standpoint, is to say, well, no, we're not going to require that. We'll allow someone to remove a building, we'll recognize the fact that there may be a vacant lot for some period of time, but we'll allow the market to work and at some point, we believe it'd be another building there, okay? So one option to consider is, don't require people to put in a new building. Let it happen when it happens and would say, when it does happen, you have to follow the guidelines. But if you want to say, no, we want to make you put in a new building, and you want to do it the way you talked about, then I suppose you could revise this to say, instead of the setting it up the way it is set up, you say, well, you have to, under one, let's say the first one, you have to prove that there's no economically viable use of the building, but, and then you can get approval subject to or conditioned upon a requirement that before the actual demolition permit would be issued, you must first, then get the other things. You got to get a permit for construction of a new building, you got to enter into a development agreement. So yes, you could make that tweak to both one and two.
I would have to agree with Matt.
I can't remember why they didn't do it that way.
That would make a more viable, a happier customer on the other end. Because if I can, if I can take my building down, then I'm more comfortable going ahead and spending all that money to get the design and the, everything done for my new building.
Yep.
But doing it the other way around, I've spent a lot of money to have somebody say, no.
Michael, do you remember if they talked about that at landmarks? I can't remember. They were pretty tied to this approach, so, but you could do it that way.
I think.
We could draft it that way.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think to me that, that makes more sense than, you know, it kind of keeps the project moving, the way other projects kind of go, you know, come into fruition than to invest so much upfront money unknown, you know. And then, you know, the other question that you had first started off with, options to, you know, have a vacant lot and things like that. I think we should have, have buildings, although there may be some, some within overlay district that, that are, that are unique, that wouldn't necessarily have to be, have a building reconstructed on, on it. And the one, the one that I'm referring to is, is the one on the corner on, on Main Street over here, that isn't attached to any other building. It's, it's a freestanding building that shares no common walls, and that might be a unique case. Where a lot of the other ones in this overlay district have a common wall or where having a vacant lot would look like a missing tooth. I don't want to change a code or an ordinance for one building, but, I mean, there's, there's a building right there, Rodney, I don't even know where that is.
It's on Water Street.
Old Utilities Building, isn't it?
Yeah.
Across from Cully's.
Got it. Oh, yeah. I mean, there's a free, freestanding building that, you know, let's say we needed to expand parking, I don't, I don't see that, I don't know, I mean, I can't claim if that's contributing or not contributing at the, at the current moment.
It's in his district. I don't believe it's in...
It's contributing, okay.
It is contributing?
Yeah.
Is it in the district?
It does.
Yep.
Over to you, Truell, how to comment.
Just a general comment, I mean, again, about, about talking about this whole scenario of conditionally spending time and money to come up with plans. Effectively, Mr. Nelson is doing that. We haven't closed on that property yet. You know, I, I don't think it's unreal, I like, I like the idea of getting some level of, of comfort before they start, that, that there's an agreement that a building could be taken down. But, but, you know, I know when, when, when I look at this, I, I think at the end of the day, if our goal is to make sure that we don't have those missing tooth or having property left open, you know, extended period of time, I don't think it's unreasonable to make that condition, to say, hey, we want to see exactly what you're going to put in its place, and, and to be able to drive that all the way through. And so, you know, I, I don't think, if a developer understands that, if a potential purchaser of property, you know, they would want it, it's, it's not uncommon for, for people when they're purchasing property to have it conditional upon getting, receiving all of our municipal approvals within a certain period of time, and then I'll be able to close on it. So I think, you know, I, I know where you're coming from, Matt, but I, I think, you know, I, I think, you know, if there is a way to, to get maybe, to, to get some determination, I think that's my biggest problem. I, I get, I go crazy when I see things like, the building, that there is no economically viable use, okay? That, that's such a strong statement that it's way too easy for twelve of us on the council to say, oh, heck yeah, there's some use that's viable. I mean, we, we've got to figure out some way to give a, a potential buyer, developer, whatever, a sense that, if you bring us something better, you know, we'll certainly will, will bring us a plan that fits within our guidelines and our downtown, we'll support it. It's the comfort resolution, it's, it's what we're doing. I still know the councils used to doing that, you know, where we bring a concept like, like again, Arnett did tonight. That's a first look for us, we kind of give them some guidelines, okay, cool, go do it. We do that all the time.
We do this every day.
We do it. I don't, the council's necessarily, that's where...
Oh, and I mean, your business, doesn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I guess it's just...
I mean, my feeling is that, that, you know, when, when Matt starts to say, well, the reason landmark, I get, the landmark folks are, their, their default is save what's there.
Right.
And, and, and I understand that. I, I think there's, that's, that's where, there's got to be that balance that says, okay, not every old building is, is worth saving. Having said that, it's certainly, again, when Todd and I were at landmarks, I could support something like this in terms of saying, hey, we want to see that you're going to replace a project. That's where you even started talking about the development agreement, you know, something that was binding, because, because the other thing that happens is, okay, so that building gets taken down and then the, then the, something happens and all of a sudden a project doesn't go forward. Now what do we do? It's that same thing that the mayor was talking about where there's a fire and they can't, can't rebuild it. Now what do we do? I mean, you know, we've got to try and make every effort to try and have another project there.
Yeah, I guess, I want to, so then, then figuring out a way for the comfort review, like as we're referring to, is there a way an applicant could get a comfort review with the council?
No.
Yeah.
Not in my opinion, not on something like this.
You know, bring in a concept to say, hey, this is what I want to do, but before I, you know, and right, like you said, we see those all the time.
How can you do that when you, unless you, you know, you've got to have a hearing, you've got to have evidence? I don't think the council would be in any position to say, yeah, it looks fine without going through the hearing process.
Come back next evening, have evidence.
I'm sure Rodney takes those questions every day sometimes, don't you? People come in and say, I want to do this, and you say, well, you can do this or that, and you do that all the time.
You will hear me say, I can't control the political process.
Right, but I mean, you can tell them the guidelines are...
The mayor sits in meetings all the time where I say that.
You do tell them what the guidelines are.
Yeah, point them right out.
It happens all the time.
Right, but if the guideline is economically viable...
Right. What's the standard?
How do you determine, how does Rodney, how does Rodney determine that?
Economically viable is a substantive, subjective term.
Very much, very subjective. What do you want to make out of it? Commissioner Barman.
Yeah, I, I, I think I understand all the pros and cons of the different steps in the process, but for me, I think if we can't get a little bit more clear on that very first economically viable, I think that, that's where I'm having the most difficulty.
You mean, like, what does that mean?
What is, I mean, what does it mean, but also not only what does it mean to us, but within the context of some of the legis, the, the state legislative changes as relates to burden of proof that we've been talking about during hearings? Because, I mean, honestly, that's the crux of the argument that was put on the, the building across from the library, was that their, their assessment is that it is not economically viable, and so, and, and...
Well, then...
What, what is, that's, that's what they, I mean, I think that's still their argument.
Yeah.
But, but what do we use as a basis for that, or is there a way to make it a little bit less, because otherwise, anyone could come in and say, it's, you know, it's not within my economics to be able to do this.
I want to do this with it and I can't do it with that.
Yeah. And so I, and again, I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but that's, that's where I'm having the most difficulty with this, like, because I think we can fix the other steps.
Let me, let me give you something to compare that to.
Yeah.
If we look at the fourth one, which is a taking. So the legal standard for a taking is, there's no use, no reasonable use of the property. So it's not an economically viable use standard, but it's, I can't use my property for anything with the building on it.
Not in its current state, though.
With the current, with the building on it.
Who determines that?
Right. So, what's that?
Who determines that?
Well, the way this ordinance is set up, it would be determined by the common council, but then that decision, of course, could be, as with anything else here, could be appealed to a certain court.
Who determines that law that you're talking about?
That's the United States Supreme Court and the Wisconsin Supreme Court. And so the standard from the court is, and by the way, if we take this standard out of the ordinance, it's still there in the background, because if we don't have it in here and we say no to someone, they can still sue and say, you took my property. So I just put it in here to give us essentially kind of an escape hatch to, if somebody really believes that we're taking their property, let's give them a chance to prove it to us first before they sue us. So the no reasonable use, and I can provide some more information for, for you about what the courts have said about what that means, standard that, that's there and for. No economically viable use, if, if you want, we can certainly try and spend some time on trying to define that some way. I, I would expect we'd be looking to define it in a way that matches up with kind of market conditions. So in other words, if the building is designed as commercial space but cannot, under these regulations, be used for commercial purposes, for example, because it doesn't meet whatever the needs of the market are or regulations, and therefore they can't rent it? You know, to me, that's kind of what we're going for here, but, I mean, again, I'm, I'm happy to have you guys help me figure out how to flesh that out.
If I look at it the other way, I just think of like, like mill fat, the, not the, just the main buildings along, along the river. No economically viable use, using that description, someone could say, I, you know, that that could have been used as, as a warehouse to store junk. That has, that has economical viable, I mean, you know, that's, that's my concern about just...
Squatter's word, storing junk.
Yes, they were using it up until they went bankrupt.
Agreed. But I'm saying is, it kind of, kind of, you know, if we were arguing it the opposite way, you know, that, that I'm coming in and I want to, I want to take that building down and, and using this, this, that standard, that's kind of what concerns me. I mean, we, we actually made it less economically viable, so we could take it down, we could, you know, purchase it, but, you know, I don't know. The concern is something that someone said, and that's that it's more than, than the five of us. Whatever we come up with, it's got to be something that, that lives on to the next group and that, and that staff can apply and, you know, has some predictability.
Well, let's go through the other ones and then we can come back to the first one, just to see how many of these are challenging. So the first one, I think everyone has a little discomfort with, myself included, I would say. The second one, the elements are, one, this building or structure is not in good repair, that's not really defined, but there's something you could point to to say it's not in good repair. And the cost of repairing the building or structure would exceed eighty-five percent of the assessed value. That eighty-five percent figure, by the way, came out of a statute.
That's what I was just going to ask you, is there some standard that actually works?
There is a, in the raise order statute, which authorized the building inspector to order a building to be raised. If the building is a historic structure... to order a building to be raised. If the building is a historic structure, well, I mean, so if it's not a historic structure, the building inspector can order a building to be raised if the cost to repair would exceed 50% of the assessed value. If it's historic, it has to go up to 85% before the building inspector can say, I'm not even giving you the option to repair, you just have to tear it down. So, that's where the 85% came from. I'm, it doesn't have to be 85%, that's where it came from. That, and, and again, that's the landmarks commission's percentage. You, this body could say, you know, 20%, 10%, 5%, whatever.
Commissioner Hannah, Hannah had a question.
Yeah, um, costs of repairing, so what are we repairing it to? Are we repairing it to be economically viable? Are we repairing it to be safe, habitable? Um, are we repairing it using the cheapest materials? Are we repairing it to be...
Historically accurate, there's a difference.
Based on historic guidelines? Are we bringing it up to code? Because that, you know, if it, if it's contributing, then does it have to be using these applications? What, what are we repairing it to? Are we, are we replacing a window that matches? I mean...
So, I think the owner, the applicant would have to prove, to show you what they wanted to repair it to. It would be up to them to say, it's in bad repair, I have to repair it. Here's what I mean by repair, number one. Number two, they'd have to comply with all of the applicable ordinances in doing that repair. They'd have the design guidelines, if those are on the table, if those are the standards, they have to meet those. Of course, they have to meet building code requirements. So, um, I think the question of what repairs are, now, if they came in and they said, let's say it's a pretty nice-looking building, actually doesn't seem to be able to repair to you guys, they came and said, oh, it's in terrible shape, it's going to cost me 85% of the value to, to repair this darn thing, you'd have to evaluate their evidence, and, and have they really shown us that it's in bad repair, there's something wrong with this building structurally, code-wise, there's got to be some, something that they're showing you needs to be repaired, I don't know what it would be. Uh, but, so they're going, they'd have to, they have the burden to show you, there's some repairs that are needed, and they reach this level of cost. And if they're at 85%, the way this is drafted, they meet the standard. But again, they still, they also have to get a permit to put a new building up. We've already talked about that. So, any thoughts about that one? Okay?
I think that was just, that was the one we caught. Um, I'll, I'll just say that I think the focus here, I mean, if, the way I would interpret it is, it's the, the issue is repair, bringing it up to code. So, it's not a restoration, it's not a, um, a upgrade, it's not taking it to, for example, you know, taking it beyond the ability to make it economically viable, in, in my opinion, because it's focusing on repair. Because I think it's pretty easy, if, if you bought a building that was in disrepair, and, and it was, or it was, you know, on the, the, it's assessed value was, was low because of its condition, because they'll go through and they'll reassess because of condition. It's not that hard to go 85%.
To get to 85%.
If you're actually trying to restore it or rehabilitate it. If you're just talking about repairing it so it is habitable or up to code, then, then that's, that, I think, is a better standard. Otherwise, I'd say the standard should be like 150%.
All right, so what, what I'm hearing from that is, that section needs work. That's not that clear to me.
Can you make, add into the definitions and define repair?
Going to have to do something, because, I mean, what I, I think what I'm...
Well, if it's in a historic district or a downtown overweight district, we're not going to allow them just to repair it, right? Doesn't it have to meet the standards with the guideline?
Well, what I'm, what I'm hearing is that someone could buy a building, come in and say, it's not in good repair, and then they could say, here's my plan for all the stuff I need to do to make, put it in good repair. And your point is, well, there's, where's the line between repair and really...
Restoration.
Enhancing it in some way that goes beyond that, and now the cost is more than the 85%, and is that really what we're trying to achieve here?
I want to put an elevator in. Then, boom, you're over 85%.
Right, okay, so, I, great point.
Yeah, what we're requiring is renovation, is restoration. That's what we're requiring in all the other areas.
I, I, well, so I don't know, I think two is a problem. I think one...
One, one other thing that I could mention, there's a difference between assessed value and appraised value.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we've got assessments out there that you could argue aren't, uh, proper, and I know we have a process for all that stuff, but all you got to do is go on, go on Access Dane and look at buildings up and down Main Street, and you can tell differences, because this one was bought then at this price, and this one was bought last year at that price, and things are all over the board, you know? So, there's a big difference between appraised value and assessed value.
So, listening to the discussion, uh, number two, I'm not comfortable with number two.
Correct.
I don't know how to fix it either, just so you know. Um, number three, okay, this one, we got to talk about a little bit, uh, to see where everyone is. So, third, the building or structure through no fault of an owner is detrimental to, or does not contribute to, the architectural or aesthetic character of the district. Sentence one. Sentence two says, where a building or structure has been allowed to deteriorate in a manner that failed to comply with city property maintenance ordinances, such deterioration is the fault of the owner.
Matt, from a structural standpoint, in terms of looking at the other, uh, sentence structure, in terms of the other, the, the, the first two, um, would we, would we not be better off to, in, in number three, to have, again, the first sentence as is, have the sentence sense be, you know, perhaps bracketed, which effectively is, is clarifying the first sentence, and then don't we need to add the second half of that, which is, um, add a permit for construction of a new building or structure on the site has been approved and issued simultaneously?
They didn't do that at landmarks.
I don't care what landmarks did.
Yeah, it's up to you.
I'm asking your question, because, because if, if, if you're going to do that, because otherwise, this is the only one that says, okay, it's in bad shape, so now I can knock it down, because you're not asking that second hook.
And then you have a vacant...
It's, uh, the third and the fourth one.
Right, well, the, the fourth one, I assume that was just straight up, uh, uh, a, a court discussion, you know, about, about taking the permit, but, or taking of the building, but, but, um, to be consistent, I thought that on three, we would need to have that, that second half language in terms of a permit for construction.
Uh, it's a, that's a policy choice, I think, for, for you to discuss.
I, I think, if I remember where this came from, is that that, number three, takes into account, um, like, fire, natural disaster, flood, something like that, where if some, if, if the building got to this condition through no fault of the owner, like there was a fire, then, because we had this discussion at, at the library when we had the meeting, and, well, if someone's building burns down, and, and, and there's a shell there, and they're asking to demolish the rest of it...
Yep.
Now, do we force them in the midst of their hardship to have to put another building in that same spot?
Okay, but wouldn't this also apply to the, the non-contributing buildings, that we, that would be in the best interest of the community to have them, because it's, we, to, to allow them to take down, because the existing building is detrimental to or does not contribute to the architectural. So, if I came to you and said that, that Viking building, that we all kind of poked fun at, that I want to take that down, and I want to bring back a new building that matches the rest of the community, would, would we not want to support that? That's how I read this, as opposed, I understand what you're saying in terms of, of, of the no fault of their own being, you know, a, a fire act of God, whatever, but, but I would think we, wouldn't we want to be able to encourage somebody to take a non-conforming building and bring back something that was good, you know, that fit with the rest of our guidelines?
So, you're saying maybe we should separate out the not contributing versus a natural disaster kind of context? I, I could see doing that.
I'd, I'd just make it black and white, maybe, you know?
Yeah, I mean, because that's, that's where the concern was, is that if someone's in the midst of hardship, they clearly don't have the money, can we, can we really force, as a community, can we force them to have to enter a development agreement? They're not developers. But, yeah, if, if someone just wanted to come in and tear down the Viking building and put something new in...
Well, so let's assume the Viking building is, that's one that's not contributing, right?
Correct.
And we still haven't really decided how, whether those kinds of buildings, how the demolition provisions would apply to those. So, it could be that they don't apply at all, and, or it could be that they do, but I, I don't know how that's going to...
I guess that is a good point, because, I mean, if we, if, if we were comfortable taking the, 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 the non, non-contributing buildings and just treated that separately, you know, kept the standard, then this standard would apply to that, that fire or damage.
Right, and just put the not, if you're, if you want to demolish a non-contributing structure, you can, if you come in with an approved building through the design guidelines.
Didn't we decide earlier that a non-contributing building didn't fall under this category anyway?
But if you, but if you're demolishing a non-contributing building, any new building needs to be, needs to be in the guideline.
Yes, but, yes, but are you required to replace it immediately? If you wanted to demolish, that's what you have to decide.
I, I think you, I think you do.
I think you need a reasonable amount of time.
Well, we'll talk about what reasonable time means, because that's in here, too.
But I think if you do, if, if you do that, then you use the language at the end of one and two, and tack that on to...
You want it in three?
No, a, a new one is demolition for a non-contributing building within the district can be approved if you have the approval for a new, a new building that, you know, has a, you know, you have a building permit, developer's agreement, because if you get that agreement...
Okay, so let's break it down.
Then it's going to be this.
So, let's break it down. If it's a non-contributing building, this section doesn't apply to you except for demolition.
Mm-hmm.
For demolition, it does apply to you. You can tear your building down, but, but you got to rebuild, you got to go, you got to do the rebuild thing.
Yeah.
That's what you're thinking.
Yeah.
Is that what the rest of you guys want to do?
And that's a way to restore downtown, right? I mean, get it back to historic buildings. Otherwise, it's, then, you know, if they want to keep a non-conforming building, so be it, but if it, if it ever goes away, then what we're basically saying here is, this is what we want downtown.
Okay, so for demo...
Does that make sense, Scott, Mike?
Uh, I want to point something out, something outside about this section. As I understand this section, number three, so, how might a building or structure through no fault of the owner be detrimental to or not contribute to the architectural or aesthetic character of the district? Yeah, fire would be one thing. This language about, if you fail to comply with city property maintenance ordinances, then that's, that's your fault, right? But what you need to know is, we don't really have much in the way of property maintenance ordinances on the books now. So, if a building has been allowed to deteriorate today, I don't think we could say that that was, that may, it may not be the case that that was due to a failure to comply with city ordinances.
Another, another ordinance we need to fix.
Well, and you just need to know, if, if you adopt this standard, someone could come in and say, hey, I bought this building, it was crappy when I bought it, and it's not because somebody didn't follow the law, you didn't have a law. And I think we all know what building I'm talking about.
Well, basically, what it says here is, number three is, that's one of the conditions for denying a permit, right?
What is? No, it's for granting it. If you come in and you sh...
For denying it.
Number, number three.
Unless B say...
Sure, B three.
Will not be approved unless applicant demonstrates any of the following.
Right, so if you demonstrate that the building, through no fault of your own...
Then you can demolish it.
Is detrimental to or does not contribute to the architectural or aesthetic character of the district. If you can demonstrate that, then this standard says you get approved then.
Again, talking about, for example, our, our Main Street property that we were talking about before, if, if, if they would, if, if the developer would have, you know, they purchased it, they make an argument that, that it's, it's detrimental, again, it's, some could argue that architecturally it fit, but, but I mean, the point is, if you didn't add the, the clause that we were talking about before about saying you have to have a replacement, that was part of the discussion. We, we, we ran into it, to what's going to happen, and how long do we leave parkland or whatever. If, if there had been a, been a, a, another plan brought back to us, that would have brought another building, useful building, that would have met the downtown standard, I would like to think that that might have been approved.
I think it would have been more likely, yeah. I, I see a loophole here in the sense that it could trigger transfer of property, in the sense that someone could sit on the building for 10 years, let it deteriorate, they want it to tear it down, but they can't, so then they sell it to their brother or someone else, who then now can say, well, it wasn't my fault, now I can tear it down.
Well, no, look at, the first sentence says, through no fault of an owner, and I could change it to say any owner, current or prior owner, then what does fault of the owner mean?
Yeah.
And I've tried to say that that means if you didn't comply with city maintenance ordinances, it's your fault, but if we don't have maintenance ordinances, then is it their fault? And I think there's a good case to be made, if this standard is adopted, that somebody could say, it wasn't my fault.
Well, so the second part of that, you need to remove, right?
It's up to you guys. You have to decide what you want.
Doesn't, doesn't make sense right now.
Well, I think you have to define, what does, what does that mean, if it's deteriorated? I think the second sentence is, is important, but even more important is what you follow that up with, Matt, in that we don't have strong maintenance requirements at this time.
So, that's three, and then...
Well, I think that part of it needs to go, that, that last sentence.
Well, and, and, and/or, again, back to the, to clarifying, you know, perhaps there's a need for another clause in here, too, but, but back to, to Todd's point, that, that if this, if the intent of this was really to talk about fire, acts of God, things like that, okay, we deal with that separately.
If that's, if that's all that this is intended to deal with, then let's say, the building or structure, as a result of fire, storm, or other catastrophe, has been damaged, if that's all you want this to deal with, then that's what it should say. I really think it's important for us to be careful that we don't have squishy language that we're not sure what it means.
So, Matt, what if it said, uh, instead of failing to comply with city property maintenance ordinances, what if it just said, uh, has been allowed to deteriorate, deteriorate, uh, just has allowed the building to deteriorate?
That, that, that would be your fault, if you just haven't maintained it properly.
Yeah, right.
That, you could do that, too?
I mean, that's, you know...
Well, but, but again, an applicant only has to find one of these clauses to get the, the other move forward. So, if, if, if they argue at that point, go back to number two, that the building or structure is not in good repair, and that the cost of repairing the building exceeds 85%, again, the discussion about owner clarif, you know, owner letting it get to that point.
Just, you know, here's what chapter 38 says about maintaining it. This, of course, only applies in that to local landmarks. It says, "Every person in charge of an improvement on a landmark site or within a historic district shall keep in good repair all of the exterior portions of such improvement to prevent it from becoming damaged or falling into a state of disrepair." So, that's what 38 says, but we don't have something like that that applies outside chapter 38. So, anyway, I mean, I'm at your pleasure on item three, you just have to tell me how you want to handle that.
How about this? I think we separate something out to cover natural disasters out of the owner's control, and then I'm fine with leaving this language in there, um, but what if we added the same second half that is on one and two? Because what, you know, if, going back to your point, Scott, if someone's going to come in with a better plan for a building, and we're... come in with a better plan for a building, and we're approving it, then, then it's, it's an improvement. So I don't want to get in a situation where there's a building that someone can't sell, sits on, is in questionable disrepair, based on someone's analysis, when it makes it really tough to get an improvement on it, right? But if, if we have a plan in place that's going to bring us a better building that fits our guidelines...
So here's what I'm hearing you say. Why, why, so you're concerned somebody might have a building that they couldn't get approval under one or two, right? They haven't had a disaster.
Right.
Building isn't so great, though.
Yeah.
Um, they come in and they say, I'm going to build this much nicer building that meets your guidelines.
Mm-hmm.
You want to create some standard or some way in which you could say yes to that?
Yeah.
That doesn't exist here right now.
Essentially, you say, I want to operate this business, this current building might not, it's not, it's might not be economically viable, but that's not agreed upon, or whatever.
So what if somebody came in and they just said, I'm going to build a building that meets your guidelines to replace this building? Is that enough?
Well, it'd have to be, and this would only apply to contributing buildings, because we already created that other one for non-contributing buildings, right?
Let's say we're talking about a contributing building.
Yeah.
And somebody comes in and says, I know I got a contributing building, it meets your guidelines, I want to build a new building, it will also meet your guidelines. I personally think it'll be better, because it'll be new, it'll meet your guidelines.
Uh, I still think they need to show some disrepair of an existing building.
Like, how much disrepair?
I don't know, I guess I'm, I'm open, I guess, see what you guys think.
Eighty-five percent?
Yeah. I think, right now, the way it's written, a lot of three overlaps two, because two is talking about the building is not in good repair, and number three is talking about a building that might not be in good repair through no fault of the owner. So I think, I don't think there's, I think it's split incorrectly, in the sense that number two should just deal with the repair issue, and we should figure that out, which we're still, we've already said we're going to have to go back and look at either the percentage, or just deciding what assessed value is, and all the rest.
What is repaired?
Yes, and so to me, the issue with three is splitting that into two new ones that are more clear, and that is, one, the, the natural disaster issue, and the, the fourth, not your number four, but the, the other, the second one that would go under three, is the issue of the building is non-contributing, that we're, we're opening the door for, like the Viking building, and I, I don't want to pick out any particular building, but a non-contributing building, like the example that we had of the Viking, where someone is willing to come in and bring back a building that will now have the guidelines. And so, in that particular case, if there's a, a new bullet for a non-contributing building, it has to have the tag, the, the extra added of the, the, a permit approved and the, the development agreement on that one.
Okay, so lemme, lemme ask this, though, because it doesn't get that, so that, though, doesn't create another, that doesn't create, address the other issue, which is a contributing building...
Yes, that's because I wouldn't want...
That might be replaced by a better contributing building.
Yes, that's because, in my opinion, everything, and we've had, we've discussed at this point, in terms of, at least, a, a part of the reason that all this was created to begin with, was to have an op, an opportunity to really encourage and facilitate reuse, restoration, whatever, of the historic structures. I don't think we should make it easy to, to demolish those contributing structures.
Okay, so then, three would be changed to, to two different options. One is, it's a non-contributing building, and we're going to define that.
Yes.
And you can get approval to take that down, but you've got to get a permit to replace it, you've got to get the plans approved to replace it and agree to replace it.
Yes.
With a, one that now meets our guideline. The other is, kind of the natural disaster scenario, flood, fire, we'll figure it out how to describe it.
Mm-hmm.
You can get approval there to finish, you know, demolishing it. Is there any requirement under that scenario to build a new building?
What we've discussed is, since it's a hardship, they're not a developer, they're not demolishing it for economic gain, or whatever it might be, that, with, with that one exception, that you might not have required the same kind of time window for replacement. It'd be great if they did, but then...
Right, but you're not going to force it, or you wouldn't?
That's, that would be my suggestion, not to force it.
Okay, so lemme, lemme just take, summarize where I, where I am in my notes. Item three, we've just talked about. Items one and two, item two needs work, if you want to stay with it, it still needs clarification, it still needs some work, and item one also needs work. With one, the question is, what does no economically viable use mean? With two, the question is, you know, what does repair mean? What kind of qualifies within that scope of repair? And it sounds like you'd like to work some more on those, at least some, some of you would. Okay?
I guess I would, I mean, in response to that, repair, I guess my, my view of, kind of like what we've all been talking about here, is we want, you know, we're, we're establishing standards, right? Not guidelines anymore, and, and in order to define repair, we're going to need some standards, right? I don't think there's going to be repair guidelines, so then do we need to create repair standards? You know, I think that's, that's...
We need at least a definition of repair, because I think the...
That's the trick.
Yeah, I think the concern is, you don't necessarily want to create an opportunity for someone to qualify to demolish their building. You, you, if somebody really has necessary repairs that need to be done, and those necessary repairs would exceed some threshold, say eighty-five percent of the assessed values, which is what we have now, then I, then, then I'm sensing a willingness to say, okay, you know, we're going to let that person demolish the building, because just to save it is going to cost so much. But the concern was, that I heard was, somebody could come in and say, well, I want to do all this work, and a lot of that work might not really be necessary to save it, or necessary repair work, per se.
Yeah.
But it might be stuff they'd like to do, like, let's put in an elevator, and now they've easily met the standard for demolition, just by proposing a whole lot of expensive work that might not really be necessary. That seems to be the crux of the problem. So who's got the magic to draft kind of the definition of what we're talking about here in terms of repair or something to help us solve that problem?
Yeah, I mean, repair while maintaining the character of the building, but what character? I mean, I think the other, I mean, the other, I mean, wild card is, say, a building has a non-contributing component to it that needs repair. How does that, does that count as part of the repair that's needed? Does it not, because it's not contributing? Um, you know, because there's certain buildings that are contributing that might have components that are not, and how are those applied to demolition? Are they factored into the eighty-five percent? Are they...
All great questions.
And how likely is it that someone buys a, a locally designated landmark, or a downtown historic building, whatever you want to call it, for the purpose of repairing it because they like old buildings, they just don't like that one? So, you know, you talk about repair, or putting in an elevator, and I can tell you of several buildings downtown that would need elevators, were they to use their second floors? But would someone who bought that building buy it simply to, to take it down to build something else to conform with the standard guidelines? I would think they're buying it because they love the building and they want to put that repair into it.
Well, I mean, I guess you're right, I mean, in, in the case of an elevator, in order to make it economically viable, you might need to.
Well, it may be, and, and again, we don't, there's concern about what that means.
What economically viable is, right? I mean, if you're going to have a residence on the second story, you know, or commercial building, they get a permit.
So I'll tell you, here's what I would suggest as an offer. I can see what I can find out there that might help us define economically viable, and bring it back, take a look at it, but I would be looking for other volunteers to solve the other problem, this question of how to define kind of repair versus going beyond repair. Somebody who knows more about the field that we're talking about than, than you.
I, if you're, if you're volunteering to do the first...
Yep.
I'll volunteer to take a stab at the second. I might even offer, I'll probably craft a couple different versions of it, just to, just to give us something to chew on, because I think I know the essence of our trouble, and I don't have a, maybe because it's nine thirty, I don't have a solution that's just coming to mind, but, but I, I think I can play with it. I like the wordsmith a little bit, so I'll, I'll play on two.
And I can see what I can find out there in the world of economically viable use to see if I can craft a better definition, that we can plug a definition in, and give you something a little more substantive to work with.
And then going on to the next couple sections, again, our, our clause about dealing with, with fire or, or damage or those things, frankly, the discussion about, that's where I was just looking at all the, the buildings that we have downtown that either are or are not contributing, I think it's unlikely, as, as the mayor was just saying, that someone would purchase a contributing building and want to take it down to replace it with another contributing building. So if we, if we previously were saying non-contributing buildings wouldn't fall under this, then, then we don't need to try and grab that, you know, back in here. If we, if we feel like we have to tie non-contributing buildings back into this, then, then that really is the case. Again, if it's a non-contributing building, then it gives them the opportunity to, to demo it, but again, I would think at that point, we would want to see the plan for something coming back.
Okay.
So, I mean, again, if you look at some of the buildings that are there, the only thing I, the only example I could ever see would be a case of, of where someone might look at one of those buildings, and from an economical standpoint, be willing to take down a two-story building and put a three-story building back up, or something for apartments, you know, and you could, then you could see the, the use and the look and all that kind of stuff. I, I just, you know, what we actually would like to do is get rid of some of the non-contributing buildings and see something else filled in there. So maybe I was trying to make that more difficult, because I think, Todd, you really hit it on the head, if, if I didn't read it originally, number three, as a, as a act of, you know, God or fire or things like that.
Mm-hmm.
But I think we do need to give that, that, give them permission to take it down.
Right.
Without forcing them to put one new one up.
To put something back up.
Yeah.
Because that does create the economic hardship.
So Scott, if I understood, you, do you think we should keep in the note about non-conforming, or do we, you feel like we don't even need it in there?
If, if we were previously, I, I mean, I, I thought there was at least some level of consensus about that this applied only to the contributing buildings. If the non-contributing are not covered under this, then I don't think we need to pull anything in here. I think Matt was trying to, to, you know, to tie that back to there, the non-contributing back into, into this demo discussion here.
Oh, I wasn't, but somebody else, I think, suggested that...
Yeah, I, I, I started that, but if you could just describe to me, so if I had a non-contributing building, and I went to get a demolition permit, I wouldn't have to deal with any of this, but...
We want them to bring back...
But then where do we trigger having to come back? You know, we don't want them to just take it down, you know? So I think, I think we probably do need it in there for that, right?
Yeah, I, I think we do. I think, I mean, when I heard your argument, your case, you're really making a case for, well, we don't need anything in here to protect the contributing, because no one's going to tear them down, and I, I think you still want to have those protections, but it's probably not, you're right, it's probably not going to come into play very often, because you're right, who's going to tear down a contributing building? Because there's a cost to demolition, to put up something exactly the same, or something that will actually fit.
The one example, again, looking at the streetscape, would be if I came along and came, came, as a developer, came before us and said, look, I want to take six buildings here, and I want to build a larger residential facility.
Yeah.
You know, multi-story, but I will still do it with some level of design.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it would actually, or, you know, it's too much in terms of six, but I mean, you know, that you'd, you'd try to combine a couple of them to make a new economically viable thing, we still would want it to look and feel and, and like it belongs in the city.
I, I think we still need, even though it's unlikely someone's going to come and buy a contributing building to, just to tear it down, I think we should still have those protections in there, and, and they, assuming they, they're not going to come in, but if we don't have them, then we're going to say, whoosh, now...
And that's where originally when I started to say it was on three, I think you want that clause that we, that we saw in the first two, which is, under any circumstance, we're not going to give you a demo permit unless you have a plan to replace it.
Yeah.
The only exception is your fire example.
Okay, so after all that, I just want to make sure, I, I still, then, I'm understanding that with respect to a non-contributing building, they still have to get the dem, approval for demolition, and they have to agree to replace the building.
Yeah.
Okay. Should we go back to the letter? There were just a few items on it.
I think we're, well, one of them was, we're very close to the end.
Yep.
One of them was talking about the, um, number eleven.
Yeah. Yeah, if somebody should, meets the, if somebody get, uh, seeks approval to demolish their building on the grounds that if they don't get approval, there's been a taking of their property, should that somehow include a requirement that they have to show, or they have, they have to agree to, to replace it?
I think that just, the discussion we had was, no, but anything they build would have to meet the standards, of course.
That's how I see that section.
I don't know how you could impose a standard that they now have to get a permit to build...
Can you legally do that?
After you've just, they've just prevailed on a takings claim.
Well, no, they haven't prevailed in, under this theory, they haven't prevailed on a takings claim.
You're right.
Under this theory, they come to the city council and they say, and I, you know, and I suppose I could consider modifying this, so instead of saying, well, it will result in a taking, I could just instead use the standard that applies to a takings analysis, which is, as I understand it, means you have no reasonable use of your property. My, I, I think that, my thinking about this was, to create an opportunity for a property owner to come to the city council and say, if you subject me to, if you don't give me a permit, and you force, and, and, and force me to go through one of these other avenues to get a permit, then I will be able to prove up a claim that I, my property's been taken, that that's a regulatory taking. Give them a chance to make their case, it's pretty unlikely that they can meet that standard, it's a very difficult standard to meet, because you have to be able to show essentially that there's like really no use of your property, but it was just there as a backstop, essentially. So I thought, I don't want to build in the requirement that you have to show both that you're going to, your property's going to be, you know, that it would be a taking, and that you're going to replace the building. But maybe I'll, maybe I'll think a little bit more about, about that.
Does that play a little bit into Matt, your discussion about the temporary versus permanent moratorium? At a certain point, if we've got, you know, that, you know, we've got a, a temporary moratorium on, on demolition, I mean, at a certain point, does that become...
Uh, it's, at a certain point, that, the longer that moratorium is in place, the more concerned I am about the, about the moratorium.
That becomes...
I, I'm not, you know, I, I don't, I don't know exactly what the, what the claim would be, it might be that, I don't know if it would be a takings claim, it, it, it may, I'm not sure, you know, it's been a while since I really dug into moratorium research, because frankly, we, we just haven't seen a lot of activity that led to a moratorium being happened for, since, since it was really busy in the development arena back before the recession. There just wasn't any, no one was talking about doing a moratorium. And so it's been a long time since I've looked into the, you know, where are the, what are the kind of legal limits? I'm not really sure what they are. I'm a little concerned about it, though. So I'm going to think a little bit more about four.
The last two items are both related to having us all look at the guidelines. The last one is kind of an example, you know, the, the guidelines say, signs need to be painted on the windows. Is that practical or required, or, you know, are decals reasonable or not? You know, go leave decals, are they, I don't know. You know, go leave decals, are they, I don't know, so those are things you guys have to help me.
What does our current ordinance say about that?
This, the guidelines say they need to be painted on.
But what do our current guidelines say? Our current?
Don't have any.
We don't have any ordinances regarding that?
We have sign ordinances, but it doesn't say it has to be painted in the window.
What does that say?
You can have a decal, yeah.
It's more just based on the size of, the area.
Size and the area.
Talking about window signs, you're not talking about building signs on the side of the building, or?
Signs, I'm just going by what the guidelines say right now, just to give you an example, another thing we need to nibble through and come to terms with. So, that's where we need to be.
So, we got to the end of the staff memo, I think we hit the high, all the other issues that I can think of, seems to, a couple folks, Todd and I have each agreed to do some additional work, and I think a number of you want to look through those guidelines, so I think there's work to do, and then we come back in a month.
If I can make a suggestion, when I look at it, I think, when we look at the guidelines, the most important part is seventeen to forty-four, because the, before that is just introductory educational material, the back of that is case studies, and, but when you actually talk about the guidelines themselves, it's really seventeen to forty-four, where it's being more prescriptive.
We'd want to narrow down the definition.
And it might be necessary, actually, to, to create a new document, you know, to really take that, take those pages, copy them out, mark them up, and just create a new document, say, these are now the guidelines.
Now, I think for property owners, I, I think it's good for them to have the rest, because it provides context education, hopefully they'll be more knowledgeable, but, I mean, this is, this is the crux of what we're going to have to actually, as a plan commission, this is what we'd have to use to evaluate anything that came in, is that section.
By doing that, it takes it out of the nineteen nineties context, though, and it brings it a little more up to date as well.
Well, then also, like on, I shared with Michael, I mean, page forty-seven talks about the design guidelines methodology, basically, how are we going to, you know, put these guidelines in place, and effectively, it says, you know, every block has got its own unique characteristics and things, I mean, there's, there is an element of, of kind of, re-surveying what our situation is, because again, it's twenty-five years ago.
Here's a definition for repair.
Oh, you got one?
It is, there's one that's stated in here, action to preserve, defines maintenance, repair, and replacement, repair includes fixing an existing element such as patching a wood cornice.
Todd, there you go.
I'll take a look at it, what page are you on?
Forty-seven.
All right.
Bottom right.
I'll, I'll look at that.
Well, that's not fair, Todd's job's all done now.
I don't mind having easier.
Somebody find an economically viable use once more.
See, that's why I need to review this, I need more time, the answers might all be here, right?
It could be. However, I think.
Is that enough?
Done for tonight, if there were folks that would like to, so, move.
Move, motion to adjourn.
The motion by Hannah, is there a second?
Second.
Matt, I'm sorry, was that the other Matt?
Second.
Both Mads want to go home. But the second, Fred Bartlett, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, motion carries.